Along those streetscapes. Here's the aerial map, so again you can see there are multiple parcels. There is a right-of-way, existing right-of-way that runs through the property. It is unimproved. As in the past, when council approves a DCI and shows the potential abandonment of a right-of-way, then that would grant council approval and it would continue through the review process administratively with the attorneys. Here is the site plan. Again, you can see the development along three main frontages: American Industrial Way, Shamley Dunwoodie Road, and Shamley Dunwoodie Way, with the parking structure oriented towards the existing southbound restaurant. You can't see the amenity spaces there, and then the light yellow area is the area where they have proposed the commercial and restaurant uses. There are several exhibits in your staff report. This is the elevation for the parking deck, so the top right would be the view of the parking deck from Shamley Dunwoodie Way, whereas the bottom would be the view from the neighboring property where Southbound's located. They have since submitted to you some renderings of potential public art that may be placed on there. Those came in to us after the packet, but we will update it for the Tuesday council meeting. And then there are elevations, colored renderings. This is showing you what the American Industrial Way elevation would look like, again with that commercial retail space on the corner. This is the elevation from Shamley Dunwoodie Road, so the intersection of American Industrial and Shamley Dunwoodie Way. And then finally, the Shamley Dunwoodie Way frontage, and you can see the parking structure there on the right-hand side. Several site photos. Most people are very familiar with this property. We do recommend, staff recommends approval of the DCI with conditions. A few conditions I wanted to point out. We have made some recommendations about some exterior changes to the parking garage to make it more resemble the building. We also made recommendations to provide more commercial space along American Industrial and Shamley Dunwoodie Way, and then potentially relocate the amenities from the front side of the building to Shamley Dunwoodie Way. And the reason for that is Shamley Dunwoodie Way is a storefront street in the city, and so that would be a way that potentially the street could be activated. Again, just in there for your consideration. We do recommend approval of several of the variances and waivers. However, we do recommend denial of the request to increase the impervious surface, because again, that can be done with pervious paving materials. We also recommended denial from some of the supplemental zone requirements and the open space requirements, because we feel like those could be met. And then additionally, the biggest chunk of variances we recommend denial on were for the parking structure and to vary from those requirements, and then the request to not vary the utilities. And that's all I have.
Great, thanks Matt. John, did you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay, very good. All right, then we will ask those wishing to speak in favor to please come up. Remember, we'll have 10 minutes for this, and then we'll ask for those in opposition. Whatever you want to do, we're good with it. You're not going to offend me.
How's that?
That sounds good.
We good?
Yeah.
My name is Jason Linscott with Dine Investment Group. Appreciate you guys hearing this tonight. We are excited to bring it before you, before you all. This is some property that we've worked on for many years to try and put together. There's several parcels, and it has taken over five years to kind of bring it all together, to do something cohesive here. We are, we have been committed to doing some projects in the city of Shamley, excited about the vision of what the city, particularly the downtown area, can become and is becoming. We are, we have partnered with Atlantic Residential, Ben Kern and Richard Aronson's firm. They are incredible guys who do some great mixed-use and multifamily projects. We're doing several projects with them, and we're a good team together. The approach here was really to focus on creating something that really enhanced the downtown nature of the area, the walkability of it. This is really why we focused down here on this project, and another project we're working on that you guys obviously are familiar with, in the Manapro Silos, Silos and Tower Project. Generally speaking, trying to focus on walkability, creating activation between residential stoops and commercial storefronts, using this island property in the right way, as best we can, to activate all sides of it in certain ways, not all in the same way. And it's exciting, you know, particularly this authentic downtown area where we have access to MARTA and the rail trail and other things. So we've really worked to enhance the rail trail here, bring it towards Peachtree Road, really create some connectivity all the way around the property, literally the rail trail sidewalk we have on three sides of the project. So that's really been our focus with this, and it's kind of been finding the right balance of where to put commercial space, where to have residential stoops, and it's, you know, it's not a perfect science, but trying to find that right balance and approach. The other thing we're really focused on here, and I'm going to try and be a little quick, because I know Julie wants to have some time, was parking, which Matt mentioned a minute ago. What we did here was typically, we'd want to have one parking space per bedroom, which is what the residential use needs. That's about 417 spaces, which would be behind a residential gate inside the parking deck. That leaves us with another 97 spaces in total, of which 38 is for the commercial and retail that we are doing in the project. That's about seven spaces per thousand for that retail, which we think is appropriate. It leaves 59 additional spaces unneeded for our project, which the goal was to do that for public use. And we've worked with our neighbor who owns the southbound property, the Pichulics, and trying to understand what they need. And if we can create more public space down there, the thinking is, if that property can be successful and continue to be successful and thrive, we have some great authentic buildings there that really kind of merge right into what we're doing. To the public, from a perception standpoint, it sort of all looks like one block. And the commercial wraps Peachtree Road, and then our commercial wraps all the way down American Industrial Way, and then turns the corner at Shamley Dunwoodie Road, and creates some cohesiveness there. So that was the design concept, and I won't get into too much else, but I wanted to kind of make sure everybody understood that that was the goal. And what we've accomplished there, we believe, is a lot of public parking on our lower levels, which truthfully pushes our residential parking higher, not as good for leasing, but it's important to create public parking spaces, which we all know in the city. So I'll turn it over to Julie. Appreciate everyone's time, and obviously here for questions.
Great, thank you, Jason.
Hey Matt, if we could turn to the next slide. Julie Sellers, 1776 Peachtree Street, here on behalf of the applicant. I appreciate the staff's presentation. I'm just going to touch on a couple of the areas. I think there's kind of two general categories where the staff has recommended denial and the applicant is asking for approval. That relates to the site design and the parking deck. So I'm going to start with the site design and just touching first on the impervious surface. Under the VC zoning district, the impervious surface is 80%. We're asking for 86%. For comparison, if this property was a PUD, which a lot of the surrounding developments are, that impervious calculation maximum is at 90. So we're actually asking for less than what the PUD requirements are, but based on the VC restrictions, we are asking for 86. Talking about, Jason touched on the rail trail. You know, that's a 12-foot sidewalk, basically, and then we also have eight and 10 feet sidewalks around. The city won't let us use pervious paving materials for the sidewalks, and those sidewalks take up about 10%. So, you know, when we're really with any development of this scale, it's all about balance. And so when we're looking at the balance, it really is looking at what makes sense, and from a site that is three streets with storefront streets is a pretty constrained site. Also wanted to just touch on the fact, Jason mentioned it, that we are adding new on-street parking on American Industrial Way and Shamley Dunwoodie Way. Another area for requests that did not have staff support is the amount of hardscape in the open space. Again, just for a point of comparison, under the PUD regulations, there's no maximum, but yet the VC limits us at 25%, so that's the basis for asking for more hardscape. And then again, areas in the supplemental zone that are not accessible by pedestrians. We do satisfy that on American Industrial Way, which is the more commercial corridor that is open to the public as it gets down into the more residential use with the stoops and planters that are planned to really activate. It does provide that separation from the publicly accessible, which is the need for the variance there. Matt, if you could flip to the next slide, please. This is just showing sort of an example. We know that connectivity and really approaching this in conjunction with the existing commercial from a parking space perspective was important. And so what originally we were asking to have a waiver from the interparcel connectivity. We have been able to figure out, we don't want to lose a lot of spaces, but if we can work out an agreement, yeah, we are certainly willing as part of this process to provide an easement for future one-way access that would be from essentially the southbound parking lot from that parcel into the parking deck. So if you're going to southbound or those commercial areas, the parking lot's full. You can easily come into the parking deck and find parking there. Matt, if you could flip to the next slide. This is really going to the second big area, I would say, where the staff has recommended denial on some of our variants. I wanted to make sure that we were clear in what we were actually proposing. Sometimes it's hard when you've got these, you know, just one-dimensional colored, to really visualize. But this is, to be clear, a painted precast concrete with reveal. So this isn't just gray cement stuck up on old-school parking deck. This is the precast concrete with a lighter color. The bottom two floors are, do have that brick facade. And if you think about the Parkview parking deck, if you're familiar with that, they have the metal, dark metal window frames. They don't have the glass in them, but it's the metal frame. So it does give that visual screening. Parkview does not have the concrete spandrels, which is being proposed here. The benefit of the concrete spandrels, especially as it faces Shamley Dunwoodie Way, is concerned about headlights from the cars, and so the concrete spandrels will block those headlights and will shield the autos from view. If you'll flip to the next screen, I'm going to go ahead and try to wrap it up quickly. I do want to save a little time for rebuttal, but this is the east-facing side. If you can see the white boxes on the bottom, that's kind of approximately the southbound building location. So you can see, you know, we're not fronting on Peachtree. This is what we have struggled to really describe, and you've got the visual in front of you. This is where we are proposing to have six artistic panels that would be affixed to the parking deck to provide that screening opportunity. And the last slide that we have is representative of the artistic renderings. Again, this is a nod to the history of Shamley and the importance that the auto industry, aviation, and train with the rail in Shamley on the right-hand side, that's the real focus. Those are train windows looking out at different perspectives in Shamley, obviously PDK in the middle, and then the Shamley sign, as well as the automobile on the left. Again, this is an artistic interpretation. We're open to feedback and suggestions. This was sort of a first attempt, but if, you know, we're open. So just hopefully that gives you the look and feel of what we were thinking, and hopefully the handouts that you received by email today and the paper that you've received today gives a little better demonstration of how that would look on the building. And I would like to reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Julie. You're actually over by about 10 seconds, but you know, I'm sure we'll have time to discuss this a little further. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Please sort of make your way to the microphone, tell us who you are, your address, and we'll vote from there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is John, sorry, John Voorhees. I am the property owner at 3477, and I'm representing that 3477A and 3471 Shamley Dunwoodie Way. My first quick question is, did the council receive my email that I sent over yesterday? The instructions online were to submit it before noon the day before, and I did so, but if it didn't happen, I'll try to make this as brief as I can. I'm representing those properties. I'm severely concerned about the project and the variance requests as they pose potential hazards for the people and the citizens living at our property currently. If there was a house being built next door, that would be one thing. This is a megalithic structure, and one of the variances that they are requesting is to reduce the construction buffer between the properties. People that live there already expressed concerns to me about, well, this is a 70-foot tall structure. What's going to happen if something falls off the top? It's literally going to fall through the roof of my house while they're building, if there are any accidents. Specifically, we're concerned about potential damages to the structure during the construction process. If I read the information correctly, it seems like they're going to have to come in and gut everything from the corner of my property all the way down to right behind Atlanta Discount Music in order to put sewage lines in and other things, parking deck footers for the building and everything. We're concerned about fire and emergency access, parking issues during the construction, also drainage. If I'm understanding correctly, there's a 12% grade on the property. I already have tremendous issues with water runoff from the southbound parking lot and the empty warehouse that's now, used to be the, I believe, a Dolores Webb property. Over the years, we've had issues with that, and I've always just done my best to do rock or drainage or French drain or something to try to deal with that issue. We think that one of the variances is for the impervious surfaces that would create even more of a water runoff. What I did not have time to view, I've been trying to come to City Hall and development locations to get maps of plans or a picture of anything of what's going to be done. And until just this week, all the maps I had looked at had Shamley Dunwoodie Way kind of just blocked off. It just wasn't really in the scenario yet. And I just found all this information online three nights ago in looking through the agenda packet and all the information, and it is 469 pages. So I was up for quite a while trying to make sure I was reading the appropriate things. Not to mention also, there's going to be a lot of noise and pollution from vehicles that are going to be there in the area. The diminishment of value to my property, as I said, the people that live there have already come to me and said, hey, we're scared. If they're going to be building a 70-foot parking deck 13 feet from my bedroom, I don't want to live here anymore. So the residences that are there have come to me and said, we feel unsafe. I feel unsafe there with that type of a structure being built. In the DCI application, the applicant states that none of the requested variances would cause detriment to the public good, as we disagree. It certainly would cause detriment to myself, being the property owner, and the other people that live there as well. In the email it briefed on, I'm a little confused about this whole process. Apologies for not knowing exactly all the rules and everything to do. The first time I learned of any variance requests was before the last meeting, which it was deferred to tonight. So I've not had a chance to even review all the information about the variance requests that are asking. In the email, it lists number three, which is for combustible materials over three stories. That concerns me. The impervious services, prohibition of alcohol within 100 feet of a public street, increased occupied spaces, mechanical systems, reduced parking requirements. I know they had talked about sharing parking spaces, but if I read correctly, and once again, I could be incorrect, it said that that parking deck was going to be open for public use for everybody, whereas the statement that they just said, said it was a gated parking deck. So I could be a little confused on that as well, but if it's a gated parking deck for the residents, clearly it's not shared for everybody to use. Do we have a clock?
Oh yeah, you're good. You still got five minutes.
Okay, great, great. Just want to make sure.
Unless somebody else wanted to speak in opposition, but it's your prerogative to use as much of that time as you want.
I do have Ms. Merly here. She's the owner of 3471, and if you have questions for her, I'm sure she'd be glad to answer. She came just to be in support of what I'm saying. We are in complete agreeance about this. One bigger issue is that, and by the way, every time I came to City Hall and to the development locations, they were closed because of the virus, so I never could actually get there. So I've done my very best. I recently found this information online. And if, they mentioned that they had communicated with their neighbors, southbound. No one's contacted me at all. No one's said, hey, we're about to build this three-and-a-half-acre structure next to your property. What's your input on it, or what do you have to say about it, or do you like it, or you don't like it, or anything? To my knowledge, now it's been a whirlwind year. My mom has passed away, the COVID's happened, and I've got a two-year-old child, so I'm running on maximum overload here as far as brain capacity on doing things, and this is not my daily job. This is not what I do, but I hope I get this across to the council this evening. We are strongly opposed to a number of the variance requests under consideration for this project, and we believe the variance requests are not reasonable nor consistent with the Shamley zoning proposal review standards, City Code Section 208-5, if I believe I read that correctly. With respect, we request the denial of these variances or the postponement of, so that further information may be obtained about protections that will be in place during the construction. What's the barrier going to be? I mean, this is a lot of concrete and steel that's going to be going in over there, as I said. And my properties and the properties next to it were built in 1940. They're not going to survive that type of construction, and how I've come to all this conclusion, which was in the email as well, that when southbound was built, I had significant structural damage, foundation damage. I was in my apartment one night, and literally, or one afternoon, and when they've got that backhoe, they were installing giant sewage. I had mirrors falling off the wall and damage to the property. With respect, we request the denial of these variances or the With respect, we request the denial of these variances or the postponement thereof. With all that being said, I want it to be clear that I don't want to be the monkey wrench in the plan. I don't want to be the one that's arguing about this big, beautiful structure that they want to add to the city. I just want to make sure that we, as citizens and the people that live there, are protected and safe. And with all that being said, as soon as I, I have seen the construction going on, so I knew something was happening, and from all the maps I've seen, and now this one, my house is not in your grand vision of what that area is going to look like. So the property has been put up for sale. But what I am requesting is that I am not there, not the property owner living there while a 70-foot gigantic structure is being built next door. Those are my, and I really wish, I'll try to send the email again to make sure you get it. I did comply with sending it in by noon yesterday, and it said that everybody would receive it. The email really details and explanation, the exact codes that we're against and so on, and I'll give up my time there. I believe I've gotten across that we are opposed to the variances under 208-5 that are there to protect the current citizens who live in Shambly currently. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. There is about a minute and a half left. If anyone else wishes to come up and speak in opposition? No? Okay. Did the council want to grant you further time? Because I think that the applicant wanted to rebut maybe some of the things were said.
Sure.
Well, make a motion and add time.
Was that your motion, John?
Make a motion to add five minutes to the time.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, wave at me. Let's let that pass unanimously. Is Brian here, or is he virtually again? All right. Woo! All right, so we have added five minutes more to each side, which would give a total of five minutes for those four and six and a half for those against. Got five minutes.
Thank you. My, my understanding was just a brief rebuttal, so I don't need probably more than a minute, but I was expecting that the applicant would have the last statement. I did want to just make a couple of points in response to Mr. Voorhees. You know, this application was originally scheduled for the June meeting and was deferred. The application materials, my contact information has been up on the city's website now for probably close to two months, so I'm sorry if there wasn't an understanding, but I do know that the broker that is listing Mr. Voorhees' property has been in touch with my clients and certainly has been familiar. I believe that maybe last year, Mr. Voorhees was in touch. So I think that, you know, that this has been in the works for quite some time, and the information's been publicly available for a while. Safety is obviously a concern for everybody. I can tell you that my clients are certainly not interested in a construction zone that is unsafe, so thankfully, you've got a quality developer, and there are regulations that do provide for safety. I think it's important to point out the zoning of this property allows for this scale of development. We are not here asking for a single-family residential zoned property to somehow be rezoned to allow for this magnitude. This entire area is zoned for village commercial, and it is just that. It's not intended for the future use to be single-family homes, nor is the list price for Mr. Voorhees' property reflective of a residential sale. So also touching, just to clarify, because I know, and I have to take responsibility, I think I created some issues and confusion with the parking. So just for clarity's sake, as it relates to the parking deck, the resident parking would be on the upper levels and would be gated and controlled access. From that point up, the lower area on the deck is for the commercial, retail, and public parking. So just to provide that level of clarification, because again, I think that there were some confusions based on how we presented the actual variance request. So that's all I have for the rebuttal, just briefly. We are certainly here to answer any questions, appreciate the council's time. I am certainly happy to talk to Mr. Voorhees afterwards, you know, give him copies of the plans, and really go through what is being proposed and talk through the variances, because while it looks like a lot, it's not uncommon when you see a development of this magnitude. I think most DCIs that come before this council have multiple variance requested, and that's just because of the code is not a one-size-fits-all, and certainly not when you're looking at developing nine parcels. So thank you for your consideration. Again, we're happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. All right, we still have two more minutes. Do those wish to speak in favor? All right, that'll pass, and then six and a half minutes for anyone wishing to speak
Just reiterating, if you could review the email at some point about why we're against the variances or need the postponement of, and the biggest one is the construction buffer. I mean, I don't know if you are familiar with the property, and the property line is literally, the property line is about eight feet off my bedroom wall. So if they're coming within 13 feet of that, I just, I don't understand how, I'm not a contractor, I'm not a construction worker. I've done some construction in my life, but my biggest concern is about that. Those structures, they were built in 1940. I don't see how they're going to survive an environmental impact of that nature, and that's my biggest concern, and the safety of the citizens that live there currently under the Shambly 28-5 codes that are already in place to protect those citizens. And I'll stop it there, because I know you have a lot to do. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
One more quick thing. I have not been in contact with any from their division, except in 2016, and Mr. Matt Oliaro, we had a meeting. Now, my real estate agent is here. He may have spoken to them, and I may, I may not be aware of that, but that's why. And I'll be glad to talk to them in any other environment or time. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Very good. As I said earlier, normally, we would move this forward to the later in the agenda, but we will expedite that and allow the council to ask questions of the applicant and/or the staff at this moment. Who wants to go first? Leslie, I see your microphone on in your closest.
Where to start? Where to start? I think that this, I'm not sure who this question is for. I think it's for the developer, not Julie. Sorry, Julie.
Jason, come on up.
Jason. Okay. One, two, no problem. Three, we're talking, three, we're talking podium built in general with stick built above podium, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Except for a few variations where the grade of the property disallows that.
Correct.
Okay, so no problem with that. So number four, I'm sorry, that was number four. Number five, not a problem. Number six, I think probably pertains to one of my issues, and I have said this to you time and time again, and that is in regards to Shambly Dunwoody Road, not Shambly Dunwoody Way. You have proposed almost 100, well, I would say 75% of units on ground floor level facing Shambly Dunwoody Road.
Correct.
I see that, that's a big issue for me, a huge issue. I don't, I think, in my opinion, that Shambly Dunwoody Way is more conducive to ground floor residential, because it is across the street from an apartment complex. I think that Shambly Dunwoody Road is much more conducive and should be a lot more commercial and retail space. And not just live-work, but actual retail space. I understand that you have issues with it, but in the future, things are going to be different. And I'm not talking COVID. I'm talking in the future, in the city of Shambly, things are going to be very different on Shambly Dunwoody Road. And for that reason, I see that as a commercial area. So, so I'm very disappointed to see what you've come up with in spite of the fact that I have said many times that I want more commercial on Shambly Dunwoody Road. That's a big issue for me. The second issue is your parking. Are you including in your parking the on-street parking that you're building?
In our total parking counts, yes.
Okay. So in terms of public parking, tell me again what your, the total for public parking is going to be.
In our plan, there's 59 spaces total that are sort of unaccounted for in our use, in our, in our parking ratios.
Hey, Leslie, this is, they gave us right before.
I know. I know. I know. But I'm too lazy to read.
So that's one, one parking space per bedroom, and then that's seven per thousand, approximately seven per thousand on our commercial.
So approximately 60 spaces for public parking. Do you intend to, is there a way that you can say that your on-street parking is not allowed to be used for residential, your residence?
Sure. I mean, yeah, our residents are going to park behind a gate in the deck.
That's what you think.
Well, and, and, you know, we'd be happy to work with the city. You know, obviously, it's going to be the road, so we can't, we can't police or create any kind of enforcement on those spaces.
Right.
But if the city wanted to do some kind of time limit on those spaces, that, we'd be completely open to that, which, that would keep residents from parking there. You know, say if there was a two-hour limit, or, you know, I don't know what they are. That would certainly be, I think, appropriate.
Yeah, and I agree, and I would like to see there be some sort of an agreement that could deal with that problem, because we do have that problem all over this.
Sure.
All over our tiny little city. Those are my big ones right now.
Very good. Anyone else? I can't really see everybody, so. Brian, please.
So I'll just add to the concerns for parking, and I say this because, as you know, I live in a loft building in the mid-city district. So first, refresh my memory about the breakdown in units. How many two bedrooms versus one bedrooms? Do you know that off the top of your head?
I don't off the top of my head, but I do have it, we do have it here. Let's see, we have.
Yes, I see it's up on the screen now, so.
Okay, there you go. Yep, that's correct.
So the bulk of the units are either between studio and one-bedroom units.
That's right.
So let me tell you the situation that we have. When you're parking one car per bedroom, it sounds good. It sounds legitimate, but in fact, most of the folks in our building are married, and both husband and wife have cars. And what that has done is, is even though we have all this on-street parking, which is limited by signs for two hours, if you drive down there at any time of the day or night, all you see is orange tags hanging from the mirrors, because those orange tags indicate they are residents. It's very, very difficult to enforce for the city or for the condo association, who parks in public parking. Same with your other retail parking spots. You have a number of parking spots that are designated as retail, as do we, and those too are occupied by residents of the building. So I understand that the, the idea of one, one spot per bedroom is kind of the standard, but I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I'm not very concerned about how that's going to play out, because those on-street parking spaces are going to become resident parking spaces. And when we're trying to create more parking for folks to be able to come downtown and visit and enjoy and eat in the restaurants and shop and do all the things that our vision says that we want to do, I'm just, I'm just very concerned about that. So I don't know at this point, and I'm not trying to throw a wrench in, because I was kind of late to the table. As you know, I've been out sick and late to the table on this one, but I'd really like to look at how we could work to come up with a better plan for parking.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just from your experience over there, it seems like it really would be great to work together to find some solution for the on-street parking in terms of either time limits or find a way to enforce it that's not, because it may not be working. Because I sort of feel like no matter how many spaces we put in the parking deck for residents, if you have someone that is, lazy is the only word that comes to mind, someone who's trying to make it easy on themselves by parking on the street, it doesn't really matter how many spaces we have, they're going to try and make it easy on themselves. So we need to find a way to enforce it.
Sure. Brian, I mean, go ahead, Brian, and then I want to jump in on you here.
I understand that, but what I'm looking at is 172 one-bedroom units, and just excluding the 51 studio units, let's just assume that one person lives in a studio, which is not an accurate assumption, I can tell you, because we have studio units in ours too, and most of them are husband and wife. And so what I can tell you is for 172 one-bedroom units, which has one parking space, you're going to end up with 250 cars. And where are these folks going to park? I mean, that's just the reality of what I'm looking at, because I see it every day.
So if I could jump in here, Jason, so that you know, and maybe you're not aware, we've had lots of conversations, as Brian points out, this is not new. You know, a challenge that we have, we're trying as much as we can, and you see it around the city, to create parking opportunities, on-street parking, obviously, that's the least expensive way for us to do it. The most expensive is obviously structured parking. Like in Brian's building, you're right, a lot of people, that it is more convenient for them, maybe if they're bringing home groceries, or just even coming home from work for the evening, easier for them to park closer to their unit than is a garage. We have gone around this issue several times, and as we've gotten more commercial uses, more restaurants down in the area, we have gone to timed parking. We have, and staff has presented to us, a plan to move towards parking meters, similar to what you may see in Decatur, right? So, and it's my belief that as your development comes online and the development across the street here and what happens here with City Hall, you are going to see us pull the trigger and go towards metered parking, okay? So I think that's where, when you say if we can work together, we're working on that. Brian makes a really good point, though. For a period of my life, I try not to remember, I sat through part of the recession, I had the listing on Brian's building, the loft of 5300. I can absolutely tell you, I sold units, as Brian's talking about, to folks that are one-bedroom units that are couples, and same with some studios. So that's a reality of what we have living in this area. We'd like to think everybody uses mass transit, and hopefully, at some point in the near future, we see more of that. However, given the state of what we're in right now, you may see fewer people using mass transit, more people wanting to stay in the car by themselves. Having said that, as Brian was speaking, I understand and fully think that we can control that on-street parking. If the council so chooses, we will go, and the staff has presented us with a very realistic way to do metered parking, and we can enforce that. I'm more concerned right now, as we think about this, with the extra parking spots that you're putting there in the garage, that you're going to have your, you know, in my family, it would be the husband that parks in the, in the public parking, and my wife would get the parking spot that was, that was assigned to us. However, I'm concerned about that. I don't know how you regulate, you know, we're looking for excess parking. It's something that you and I, and you and the council have talked about on several occasions, and, and it's just, it's such an important part of this discussion, and now, I hadn't even thought about that. I'm concerned with the parking in the public parking deck, so.
Eric, if I can.
Yep.
Chime in briefly. I'll share a story that seems to work well. So many years ago, I lived in one of the Nevers projects in town where they had a cluster, and it was a similar situation. There was on-street parking, there was retail parking. You'd go through a gate, and at that point, so the retail parking was paid, it was one gate, you'd go through another gate to residential parking. And I had to run upstairs to grab something quickly, and so I parked my car, ran through the gate, swabbed in, and about five minutes later, when I came back out, it was a $500 parking space, because my car was booted. And I never did that again. So, you know, I think as we get velocity, maybe that's something that we can look at in terms of enforcing time limits. And I learned shortly thereafter, it was shortly after I moved in, folks just waited, the booting company just waited outside the building, they watched folks go in, they actually had cameras in the garage, and at the second they saw you get out of your car and go through that door, they drove up, and they just waited for you to come out and cut them a check. They didn't even leave the site. And so I think with maybe some targeted approaches, that's something we could address, and just wanted to throw out there as an idea.
Sure.
Because I certainly would never do that again.
Yeah, no, I know. And that also leaves a really bad taste in the mouth of a lot of the folks that we call residents and friends. So I can't see down there, John or Karen?
I'm good.
I just had one question about the pervious surface stuff. I hear you about the sidewalks not being able to be made of pervious. Can the rail trail be made of anything pervious? I haven't looked at our code, so I don't know.
No, the, the city won't allow any of the infrastructure that's put in for the public that must be impervious. I, I don't. I don't, I'm not an expert in this, I think probably some ADA issues and that sort of thing, but, but no, the city won't accept that.
Okay.
Very good. I think Leslie had another question.
I do have one more question, Jason, and it's, it's still about the parking. I, I'm assuming that you're limited on how large you can build that parking deck, height-wise as well as square footage-wise.
Right, correct.
Vis a vis the percentage that is dedicated to your apartment and retail space and to the parking deck.
Right. If we, you know, continue to go higher, it just becomes obviously taller and more so, it starts to, it begins to stick above the height of the, the building, which is what we're trying not to, trying not to do.
So the whole top, not the whole top of the parking structure is parking, it's a small percentage of it?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, it doesn't stick above the roof line of the building. I don't know if I have the percentage here.
Yeah, it's, it looked like about 20%, maybe. Okay.
It's less than half.
Yeah.
Can parking go down?
I just want to say one more thing. I do appreciate this. I truly do. And, and, and I'm, I have no input on this design, I, I think it'd be fine.
Cool.
Very good.
It's in the eye of the beholder, so, you know.
Yeah, well, we talked, you know, we, and, and, you know, I love that you did that, obviously, and, and Leslie has been championing our public art for a long time, and, and Karen joined our council and has been rolling up her sleeves and getting involved in that. So, public art, you know, and I think you and I talked about this, Jason, is in the eye of the beholder, but public art is public art. And to the extent that we can put it around town, and you hide in a parking deck, I think it's, it's a great, great thing. It's good to see it, it would be nice to have it in the package early on, it made us save some confusion. So, does anybody have anything else?
I'll, I'll just say with this, is it, am I seeing it right? If the site plan is, stays as configured as is, and then you were to convert some of the Shambly Dunwoodie Road units to retail, but then that, because it's typically about one per thousand, and when it's an apartment, correct? And then it's, you said it's eight per thousand, if it's like a restaurant?
The parking?
Yes.
We have a little over seven per thousand right now.
And then what is it typically in a typical, because I, I guess your, your units are...
It just depends on the mix of use, right?
The average of a, of a thousand? What is your average for space? I'm just saying, we, we have to think about the, the additional retail would, would probably exacerbate the current problem we're already just spending a lot of time talking about is the parking.
Right, and that was our struggle there, and I completely understand Leslie's comments, and, and I think that, you know, I, I understand that vision, you know, our struggle here was, and I'd love to, we just want to strike the balance that makes the most sense. I know you guys know that we're trying to do that. Right now, is it, you know, on that side, we struggled to, as we put more commercial there on Shambly Dunwoodie Road, it is difficult to park it, because it's very far from the parking, not only our parking structure, but any other parking that would sort of be around Peachtree Road or southbound, or that part of the, the area. And then on the other side of Shambly Dunwoodie Road, it's, it's difficult to envision that being parking, because it's, the grade is, I don't know what it is, I'm going to say it's 15 to 20 feet lower, right at the road, you're, you're looking over the rooftop of that building. So it doesn't, doesn't have that, that quality of about it right now. So it is difficult to, to, to put commercial space there, and, and I, I am concerned about leasing it, in that, you know, while, while it's sort of as it is now, in the future, you know, as that vision materializes and all this stuff happens, which we're all, we're all, we're all working towards, I understand what you're saying.
Would, just a minute, would some flex space, more flex space than what you've, more than what you've shown on that, maybe to get more on Shambly Dunwoodie, maybe move some of your amenities, try to help us, like staff suggested, get those over on Shambly Dunwoodie Way, possibly, or A and amenity, I don't know, just as a way to shuffle around? We, we've had this, obviously, we've had this conversation a lot of times, and, and found some compromise in flex space. I see that you've added some, it's just a suggestion, I don't know if you can or can't, but that would be something good for y'all to go back and chew on.
Okay. And, and, yeah, and, and the balance here in terms of constructability is, is what the, what the ceiling heights are, right? Because the grade changes there.
Yeah.
So that's what we were trying to work with.
No, it's, it's a difficult site.
Because it changes the whole building.
Totally get it. You guys have done a really good job, as Leslie said, trying to, and it's just like we've talked about before, it's like, you know, pushing on a, on a balloon, you squeeze on one end and start to pop out the other end, so. All right, well, I had, I had one other question, and I meant to ask this earlier, I apologize, we're talking about the parking. Julie, thank you for, for trying to help clarify or for help clarify these actual numbers, because when we looked at it, didn't recognize the other 59 spots on there, but I'd like to ask our staff, John or Matt, what, what led us to not see that in the first place? On your behalf, from your opinion, I meant to ask that earlier when we were talking about this.
Sure, yeah, I still haven't seen that anywhere. I went through the plans, the application, it refers to 419 residential spaces, the variance requests that, and then the 38 public spaces, so I would be interested to see that reflected on the site plan and the application, too. So it, those spaces, I still don't know where those are, so that would be a good question.
Julie, can you help us understand that?
I can, and again, I take full responsibility and apologize to all of you for the confusion. You know, in, in my mind, I'm thinking, we're asking for the, for the variances, so I was focused on, here's what the code requires, here's what you're, we're asking you to approve. And, and I agree with Matt, I think the only way Matt would have, I, I think I had in the narrative that there were these public spaces. You, we do have the plans that were submitted with the original submittal that do show every single parking floor and how many spaces are on each one, so I think if you go and count those, you're going to come up with a number.
I did that today, and they're, they're not there, so, yeah.
Well, maybe we need to go back and just look at it. I know, we don't have to try to solve that here, right here tonight.
Sure.
That's just, that's just something, if we can get clarity on, I have full confidence that between, you know, your team there, guys, and, and with our staff, that we can get some clarity on, and we just want to make sure we have it clear, so that we know, whatever action the council takes on Tuesday night, they're acting on, you know, what is, what you want us to see. I, I like these numbers, I have the concerns, I think there's things we can work about. Obviously, here, the council has concerns about the parking. I wish we didn't, I wish everybody used more public transit, but, but it is what it is. So, anybody else?
I, I also do want to compliment you on what you've done with the, what I call the triangle at the Music Store end. I, I think that that's a great solution for a long-time, long-existing problem. And I, and I also want to say that the million pages that you've done, that you've given to us on traffic counts, was really not required.
All right, well, Leslie, Leslie definitely got into the, she, she got in the weeds with the traffic count, obviously, I didn't go that deep, so. All right, well, thank you all very much, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you all.
All right, I guess we probably need to do a, a shift here, maybe shuffle some folks out, ask anybody out there if they need to come in for the Jim Ellis Cadillac DCI. I'm not sure if those folks are here, probably out in the parking lot.
In their Cadillac.
Everybody needs to take a shower now, wash. Mr. Mesa always needs to take a shower.
Roy, you're doing a bang-up job.
Yeah, except you stuck something in my face when I walked in, looked like a weapon, kind of, you know, I'm like, damn. Do we have the folks from Jim Ellis here? Are they coming in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Oh my God, what happened? Great.
That's because there was a million pages of traffic studies. This is, no! Nope, 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 nope.
All right, do we have everybody here that's looking to talk about the Ellis-Shambly DCI? I guess if you're not here, let us know. All right, I will repeat myself, and we'll do this several other times this evening. Normally, y'all have been here before, I understand, or know that our procedure is, we'll go through the public hearing, close that, and then that particular item, those items will move forward on the agenda to the work session, in order so that y'all don't have to go out, come back in, go out, and, as I refer to it as COVID rules, we will just go ahead and have the public hearing, and then we'll move on with the work session agenda item, therefore meaning that it, it won't roll forward, it won't be discussed, you know, this particular item won't be discussed again tonight. So with that, the next item on our public hearing is item number two, PZ 2020-638. It says zero, and 5880 Peachtree Boulevard, Jim Ellis Cadillac, Shambly DCI.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a application for development of community impact with 10 variances and six waivers, as you said, at zero and 5880 Peachtree Boulevard. The site is zone corridor commercial and is approximately 2.3 acres. The 10 variances include variances for impervious surface, the amount of open space, supplemental zone to allow a building to have the appearance of a metal building, to allow for, to not have primary pedestrian access to the front of the building, and instead have it on the side from the public sidewalk, to allow an existing motor vehicle-related use to expand on the storefront street, to allow sight lighting to exceed the maximum allowable foot candle limit in the UDO, to allow 23 spaces to be, vehicles to be displayed in the front yard, where the code currently allows zero for this particular property. There is a parking reduction request from 154 spaces to 131 spaces. There are several variances related to, I'm sorry, the, the waivers are mostly related to parking lot landscaping requirements, which are common with car dealerships, including the landscape island between every 10 spaces, and the other landscape buffer requirements in the city for parking. Finally, there is a waiver for curb-cut location and the width of an internal driveway. This, in this case, the applicant is demolishing a portion of the existing car dealership. It's currently the pre-owned vehicle showroom, and in place of that, there will be about a 10,600-square-foot addition, which will be the new Jim Ellis Cadillac dealership showroom on the first floor, and then a second-story office building that's about 4,800 square feet. If you remember, this came before you before as a DCI. At that time, Mr. Ellis was also proposing to construct a parking structure that would be used to store vehicles. That is no longer a part of this request. The only parcel and building that is part of this request is the dealership, so it's not the larger redevelopment. They are proposing to install the streetscape as required along Peachtree Boulevard, and then if you also recall, during the last DCI, they had proposed, or the city had requested them to construct a gateway monument sign at the intersection of North Schallford and Peachtree Boulevard, they would still like to proceed with that, and so that's part of the application. Here's the aerial, so again, this time, the, the main part of the development is just that blue, area in blue, it's not the larger site that's being developed with the parking structure. And here's the site plan, again, showing you the addition on the front, that's the purple is the proposed addition, the blue is what's to remain. They have submitted full architectural elevations in line with some similar car dealership redevelopments that you've seen come before you, and also some artist renderings to give you an idea about what it would look like from the street. These are from Peachtree Boulevard. Existing site photos, you can see it as an aging dealership that they would like to upgrade. Staff does recommend approval with conditions. We did add in, back in that condition about the welcome sign, just to make sure that carries over from the first one. There was also a condition about vehicle alarms that was added last time, so we did include that one as well. And we do recommend approval of the majority of the variances and waivers. We've recommended denial of the impervious surface, because we feel like that can be accommodated with pervious materials. The sight lighting we're concerned about, they've requested just a blanket variance from that without, we don't have any information yet on what they're, how much they're asking to exceed that, so we have recommended denial without that information, so it would meet our night sky ordinance. And then finally, we have recommended denial of the requirement to have pedestrian walkways. And that's all I have.
Great, thanks, Matt. John, do you have anything to add? We're good. All right, so y'all know the drill, we'll ask those that wish to speak in favor, please come up, give your name and address and/or relationship to the, the project, to the city clerk, and we'll have 10 minutes for this portion. All those wishes to speak in favor, sorry, did I say that? Pretty much be you, probably. I think you gotta turn it on, not sure.
Hello?
There you go.
Good evening. So my name's Steve Ellis, I'm with Pro Building Systems, our address is 3678 North Peachtree Road here in Shambly, and I'm representing Jim Ellis Automotive Group and the new Cadillac franchise that's to be located here at 5880 Peachtree Boulevard. Matt, I appreciate your, your thorough description of the project. We have been here before, as, as all of you know, in 2018, where we were proposing this particular renovation, which it's, it's the same to the dealership, as well as a large parking structure in, in the back of the Chevrolet project, the Chevrolet building. We have since then removed that portion of the project, it was a little contentious here in, in the city, and there was some, a lot of discussion about it, as well as at the end of the day, it really just didn't pencil financially for, for this franchise. So, we, we're back before you today with just a renovation alteration to the Cadillac store. It's pretty, pretty typical for what we do here in, in Shambly on the, on Motor Mile. Would like to point out that in our current proposal, we're only required to install the streetscape for the 300 feet of frontage that our property has currently, but Jim Ellis Automotive Group and Jimmy himself, and, and looking forward to the city for the pedestrian corridor, just the, the future and the, and the betterment of, of the Peachtree Boulevard corridor, we're offering to install the streetscape for the entire frontage of the property that, that is owned on that side of Peachtree Boulevard by Jim Ellis, which starts at the south of Buick GMC and runs all the way up to the intersection in front of the Chevrolet dealership at Peachtree Boulevard in North Schallford. One of the things that we had agreed to previously in the previous DCI was to fund and construct a welcome to Shambly sign there at the corner. We're still willing to do that, if that is the desire of, of Mayor and Council, and that pretty much, in a nutshell, is, is what we're here tonight for. I would like to say that the variances and waivers that we're requesting really kind of fall into two categories. One is, I would say, probably 30% of them are what we typically have to ask for, for automotive dealership in general. The remainder are purely a product of a redevelopment of an existing property, where we're maintaining the existing improvements, we're maintaining the buffer against the, against the residential property, and the majority of our work is done right at the front of the building, where we are taking down the one-story showroom and building back the two-story showroom with the office space up above there on the street frontage. That also helps the building come in compliance with the storefront street requirements as far as glazing, building heights, ceiling heights that are currently are deficient, as well as removing some of the parking spaces that are currently between the building and the street in this development. The 23 spaces that we're asking to maintain are the current display spaces that are there in front of the facility. So I'd like to just say in closing, we think this is a great addition to the Motor Mile. Could you switch to the, the rendering there? A new addition, as you can see with the streetscape and the streetlights and the trees and, and the new building, it's very modern, it's, it's, it's beautiful in our opinion. The, the one cool thing about the Cadillac store is, is the front portion of the showroom, back to what you're seeing there, is that wood wall, is truly just a, like a gallery. So it's not a bunch of sales guys sitting up there, it's a gallery for display of the vehicles and the retail components, and we think it'll be a really great addition to the Motor Mile, and I hope you can support us in this endeavor.
Great, thank you very much. We still have about six and a half minutes, and anyone else wishes to speak in favor? No? Is everyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please, make your way up to the microphone, give us your name and your address to the city clerk.
Good evening. It's Donna Hattower, I'm actually a resident of Duluth, I'm representing Doris Wolf at 3981 Forest Court in Shambly, 300341. Wolf at 3981 Forest Court in Shamley, 30341. And yes, I am a frequent flyer at the council meeting. I was active in the 2018 discussions, as you're aware, regarding the parking deck. I would like to say I had, on a little different subject, I did have an interest in that night sky ordinance. I don't know if anybody has noticed the Toyota dealer with the red lights that cast a red glow in the city, so I'll be looking at that a little bit closer. And I think with one of the variances, that's what Ms. Wolf is very concerned with, with the request for additional lighting. Her property backs up to Jim Ellis. As a matter of fact, I used to play in those woods, for those of you who aren't familiar with Forest Court, that area was built in the 40s to support the GM plant, and at one time, there was 75 kids on that street, and we all played where Jim Ellis now sits, which used to be Hick scream Buick. We are opposed, and she is opposed, as well as most of the neighbors on the street that are impacted by the even possibility that we could have a duplicate Toyota lighting issue, again, from the, where you enter Forest Court, since the bottom of Forest Court is always casted with a red light. The exit, I think on the diagram, and I can't really tell if that truly is an exit coming out of the new dealership onto North Shallowford, but if it is, it does appear to come right out to the red light, which we can all, anybody that's been in that intersection would know that probably would not be the best place to be at any time of day. I am happy to see, however, that things are moving in this COVID environment, that builders are coming forth, and that Jim Ellis especially is active and has revitalized the idea of the Cadillac dealership. I think it says a lot for Shamley. I think it says a lot for the community to have that area look nice. I would just ask the council and Jim Ellis himself to consider the neighbors. I think he knows this all by now, and I would trust that there would not be any light casting or any additional intrusion onto that property as he considers building and reconstructing this area. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? No? We have about six minutes left for rebuttal. If you want to say, please, come on up.
I'd just like to say two things. One, with the reduced scope of the project, we're nowhere near North Shallowford. I mean, we're, you can see there the boundary that we're just in the center, you know, kind of bookended with Chevrolet and Buick GMC. And as far as the sight lighting variance request, we're merely asking to exceed the UDO limits in the vehicle display areas, which is along the front. The sight lighting in the rear will be, you know, LED, full cutoff, night sky compliant, as well as the front, we're just asking for a little brighter light along Peachtree Boulevard for the vehicles that are displayed in front of the store.
Great, thank you very much. All right, that would conclude that part of the public hearing, so we will move forward with the portion that would normally fall under our work session, so I'll open up the council for questions of the applicant and/or the staff. Sorry, guys, it's easier for me to see Leslie.
I have a question for Mr. Ellis.
There you go, all right, go ahead, Mr. Mesa.
Which one, right?
Way to use your microphone.
Yes, sir.
That was a joke, it was intentional. Steve, I had spoke to you about the possibility of teaming up with you, the city teaming up with you to get that sidewalk extended from across the World Toyota while you have your engineers and bulldozers and, you know, all the people that do that kind of work, that so we can possibly leave just a basic sidewalk, you know, that would go across, I guess, connect where your project terminates over to the where the World Toyota sidewalk ends, as there's a section, I don't know how long it is, but I would be very interested in having a discussion with the city, maybe there could be some participation on both sides that the city would, you know, assist in, but, you know, kind of piggyback on your engineering and all that and get those economies of scale going. Is there any interest on that, or how that might work?
We can definitely help with the engineering now, I would assume the city would fund the actual construction of the sidewalk, is that what you're?
We'd probably like a quote and makes it make a decision.
So, I'm sure, I mean, we can definitely help with the engineering.
Have you already applied for your DOT stuff and all that?
Correct, yeah, from permitting standpoint, absolutely, yeah.
And that would just be something for Mr. Mesa to bring up with his counterparts here in the city council, see if they would want to, you know, do a small capital project. John's been real good about helping us find those gaps and find those opportunities, like when the Whole Foods come in and put in a sidewalk, we did the same kind of thing. So, again, not, I don't believe John's asked for y'all, and we would never require that y'all do it offsite, but that we could try to work together to get some continuity on just the sidewalk right there.
Some synergies in the engineering effort, sure.
Very good. Leslie, have a question.
Yeah, I would just be appreciative to see, not necessarily physically, but maybe diagrammatically, what this lighting would look like.
Okay, sure, we can do a photometric and submit it to staff.
Well, that, and are you talking about lighting the front of the building?
Oh, no, no, we're just talking about replacing the existing light poles with new heads. Yeah, it's all the sight lighting's existing, we're not altering that, we're just gonna, we're gonna change it from its current state to LED.
Oh, okay.
And it doesn't meet the ordinance currently in the front, so we're just asking for that variance to.
So you're still gonna cap the tops?
Correct, yes, absolutely. It'll be full cutoff, dark sky compliant.
Anyone else have questions? Brian, please.
So just so I'm clear, so do the other dealerships that you operate already have that upgraded lighting? If I can drive by and see it over the weekend, see kind of what it looks like, do any of the other dealerships have?
Porsche has it.
Porsche?
Porsche has it, yeah.
That's in Doorville.
It's in Doorville, but it has the upgraded lighting.
We don't even recognize that dealership, it's in Doorville.
Where's Porsche, where's Doorville?
Where's Doorville?
The world ends right there. This current entire campus on the west side here is still the old type, you know, metal halide lighting, so this effort would be the first upgrade to the LED dark sky compliant.
So, and I'm also assuming that since you're not building the parking deck, that you're parking the extra inventory over at your location off of New Peachtree?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and so that will be transported on a car-by-car basis when you need it, or that will be trucked over, or how's that, how's that storage?
They will be delivered, the vehicles are delivered to the New Peachtree Road site, and then brought over and as needed basis, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, gentlemen, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thanks a lot.
For being here. All right, the next thing we've got is the DeKalb County Tag Office variances, do we have the folks in here for that? Yep, I see one, okay, very good. All right, I think y'all heard my spiel, at least you sat through and saw what we did anyway, we'll do the same thing here. So the next item is PZ 2020-639, which is 3653 Clermont Road, the DeKalb County Tag Office variances and waivers.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a standalone request for variances and waivers, there's no DCI or zoning, rezoning required. The property zone CC corridor commercial is a 1.15 acre parcel. The applicant is proposing to demolish a portion of the building and renovate the building to accommodate the DeKalb County North Tag Office. There are 14 variances and seven waivers requested. The first two are related to fencing, the third is related to allowing concrete retaining walls to not be faced with decorative materials. There are variances for the streetscape, that's variances three and four. Five, related to the building not being located on the, against the supplemental zone because it is an existing building. They have asked to not provide the streetscape amenities where they're required to be located. There is a request to reduce the fenestration from 65% to 33%. Other variances are for the minimum building facade height, to allow off-street parking between the building and the street, mechanical systems to be viewable from the street, to not provide interpartial connectivity or the five-foot wide pathway from parking aisles to the building. They have requested to waive the off-street loading space and to exceed the maximum number of parking spaces. The maximum for that building would be 22, they're requesting 62. Waivers are almost wholly related to the parking lot landscaping requirement. There is one related to not having wheel bumpers between the parking space and the right-of-way, or the sidewalk, I apologize. Also, a waiver for driveway and drive aisle widths and the five-foot wide pedestrian walkway connection. Again, the applicant's requesting to demolish a portion of the building, it is currently vacant, and then renovate the remaining approximately 5,400 square feet, installing 16 parking spaces in the back on the, what would have previously been the slab for that portion of the building that's being removed. There is a billboard and pole sign on the property, they have proposed to remove those. The applicant is proposing to screen the mechanical systems that are located in the front of the building with a six-foot opaque wooden fence, which does require variance. There is a dumpster pad in the back which will be screened and meet the dumpster requirements. As you'll notice on the site plan, there's a one-way road system, internal driveway system that they're proposing. They are proposing to install a sidewalk on Clermont Road, it does not meet our streetscape requirements, it varies from five foot to eight foot wide, which you'll also see on the site plan. Here's the aerial map showing the existing building. You can see the billboard up towards the front, that V-shaped sign, you can see that from the sky. The front of the site you'll see is an existing above-ground detention facility, and then you see the existing parking area for the previous commercial tenant, and then the building will be, of course, partially demolished and additional parking, which you can see here reflected on the site plan. This is the landscape plan, so you can see they are adding some trees, you can see how the sidewalk kind of meanders from the driveway back and provides a bit of a landscape zone, but doesn't meet, again, the UDO requirements. They have submitted architectural elevations, you can see here, and this is the back, and the side, and then the existing site photos, you can see the site has been vacant for some time. Staff does recommend approval in part and denial in part with some conditions. We did add a condition three for your consideration to think about ways to maybe reimagine that front detention area, since there are so many variance requests to place things between the building and the street. We did add a recommendation that perhaps this could kind of set the tone for redevelopment in the area and create a nice kind of public space in front of the building. In addition, we did add a condition about, instead of that wood fence, perhaps it's a brick fence that matches the building and is screened with landscaping to make that more attractive from the street. And then we did notice in the site plan, there's some rear parking lot gates that seem to be overlapping parking spaces, and then reusing that existing pad as parking, we just added a condition that, you know, that just needs some further review before permitting, which would occur anyway, but just for clarification purposes. We do recommend approval of several of the variances and waivers. At the same time, we do recommend denial of the variance to not face the concrete retaining walls, we do recommend denial of the landscape and streetscape, I'm sorry, the streetscape variances, the fenestration variance, the request not to provide interpartial connectivity, again, that's just an access easement for future connectivity, and to not provide the loading space is another one we've recommended denial on. Also, several of the waivers, we feel like since there is so much additional parking being requested, that there could be a potential to meet some of these requirements, that we do realize there are some constraints because it is an existing site. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you, Matt. All right, assuming, John, you don't have anything, you're not waving at me, very good. All right, so at this point, we will ask those in favor to please make your way to the microphone, give us your name and address, and/or how you're related to the project. Remember, we'll have 10 minutes for this portion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my name is Carl Westmoreland, my address is 3343 Peachtree Road. Mr. Connelly is going to address the specific request in a few minutes, but I wanted to give you an overview of the project. This application, as you heard from Mr. Dixon, is to allow conversion of an existing vacant building to the DeKalb County Tag Office, which would allow the relocation from their current location on Dresden Drive. There are really two requirements of the county that are driving most of the variance and waiver requests. First, is that the, one reason they want to move, maybe the primary reason they want to move, is their lack of parking at the Dresden location, and so that has driven, in an effort to provide more spaces, the request to eliminate landscape islands, landscape strip, pedestrian path, and also to eliminate the loading zone, because the county does not use trucks that size to access the Tag Office. The other issue that the county has got is security. The site will be gated, that requirement of the county leads to the request, in addition to the dramatic grade drop-off on either side of the property, to not have interpartial access, it also has to do with the variance request on the fenestration. It's always obviously a balancing act to convert older buildings to viable use, we've been through this several times. Given the constraints of the site and the peculiar needs of the user, the county, we think that this application strikes a reasonable balance, and it also, as you heard, gets rid of the billboard, which I think is certainly a positive for the city. So with that, let me let Mr. Connelly address the individual requests.
Great, thank you, Mr. Westmoreland.
JR Connelly, applicant 5080 Peachtree Boulevard. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will briefly run through what we definitely can agree to, and we've tried to comply with as much as we can in those items that staff recommended denial, which we're not going to be able to accommodate. First of all, most of the UDO we do accommodate. The one, one of the big things I know in the city from prior development is the streetscape, and we have two limiting factors on the streetscape that limit what we can do. First of all, there's only about 12 to 14 feet between the beginning of the detention pond and the curb, which does not allow for the full 20-foot width. Secondly, there are underground utilities, there's water lines, gas lines, storm lines that are basically in the first five to six feet back of curb. So our proposal is from the back of curb, three feet, which would include the pedestrian lights, eight-foot sidewalk for most of the frontage, other than where at the ends of the property where it tapers to adjoining properties, and then we plant the street trees on the other side of the sidewalk. So from the streetscape standpoint, we're providing the pedestrian lights, we're providing a wide sidewalk, and we're providing the street trees, we're just not putting them in exactly the same locations as to what the ordinance does, again, due to the diminished width that we have to work with and the underground utilities. I will say that we do have flexibility if, to move some of that around, if the engineers and architects approve, but we thought that that would give the best, to follow the intent of what we think the ordinance is, and I don't think anybody driving by or walking by is really going to notice that it's two-foot different sidewalk, or that the trees are on the different side of the sidewalk. Another important thing, obviously, we're agreeable to is remove the billboard and the pole sign. We've removed other billboards in the city, and we're glad to be able to remove one more. We also are agreeable to change the wood fronts on front that you can see on that rendering to brick to match the building. We could also, I've heard suggested a green wall, I'm not sure which is going to be the best one, we've said probably brick might be the best for the long term, but that's what we've proposed. And also, we are agreeable to the staff's recommendation to face the concrete walls with some decorative material. We think that's something we can accommodate, we do think it would improve the looks, and we think that's a good suggestion. And I don't know if you guys saw a copy of our red line that we sent to the city staff yesterday afternoon that talks about what we agreed and didn't agree to, I guess not. So, I'll walk through the conditions first, and Matt, maybe you can pull those up.
Is that, is any of this in?
Now, it's not in this presentation, because we didn't have the staff recommendations at the time.
So what did you want to see, I'm sorry?
I don't know if you wanted to put up the conditions and then the waivers, so as we talk through them, those are available for people to see, that might be the easiest. So first on the, and I'm not going to talk about things we're agreeable with, I'm just going to talk about things we have questions on. The first condition is fine, second one required streetlights and street tees in the landscape zone, we talked about that, it's not prudent to put the trees on top of utility lines, we've just moved them on the other side of the sidewalk, so we think that condition should be amended. The next condition on the stormwater facility, we're not able to modify that facility, and we're not able to put it underground, and so we're not able to agree to that condition and putting a pocket park in and so forth, that's just not feasible based on the existing conditions, unfortunately. The next condition I think was on pervious paving. The next condition, I think, was on pervious paving. We think that pervious paving is a really bad idea here. There's a lot of traffic. That's one of the reasons for the move, is the need for more parking. These spaces are used all day. There are people going in and out all day. Pervious paving would be a real nuisance, plus, by removing the existing asphalt, it would create additional land disturbance, which we don't think is necessary or desirable. We have agreed to the fence, and the rear parking lot gates and reuse of existing building slab, I think that's shown on our building permit plans, and we think that that's fine for those to be reviewed at that time. Going through, Matt, I don't know if you want to do waivers or, let's do the waivers first. They're really all very similar, as relates to landscape islands, the wheel bumpers. All of those are not feasible on this site. We did add islands in the rear where we were able to, but in the one double row of parking in the front, we're not able to add islands. We're not able to add the sidewalk. We need every space of parking on that space to meet the county requirements. Also, remember, this is a tag office where people are bringing their vehicles to get a tag on, and most customers, if not all customers, will be driving, and we don't see where people will be utilizing, walking to the site to get a tag. So, we could talk about those in some more detail, but that essentially covers all of those. In terms of the variances, we've agreed to the concrete wall variance. We've talked about the streetscape. We can't meet the requirements verbatim, but I think we have a good solution. That would be three and four. We don't have room for benches, trash, and recycling receptacles. We only have 130 feet of frontage, so we don't even have a very long stretch of sidewalk. And if we can somehow find a way to squeeze those in, we will. I'm a big fan of them, but I just don't think we have room. The fenestration requirement is driven mainly for security at the request of the tax commissioner. They, that's the maximum windows that they feel is the right environment for what they do in that building. However, the architectural elevation has differing materials and different panels, so even though the windows do not meet the fenestration requirement, you do get the feeling of having a building with more windows. So, we've tried to accommodate that through the architecture and still meet the security needs of the tax commissioner. Interconnectivity, there's two issues with that. The first one, as Carl said, was security, is the tax commissioner does plan to put a gate on in the evening at the front of the property, and interconnectivity would not be compatible with having, providing the security that they desire by blocking off the parking lot. And secondly, there are retaining walls on both sides of the property, and there are substantial grade changes, and it does not look that it would be at all feasible to even have interparcial access. Personally, I'm always a believer in interparcial access where possible. I don't think it's possible here. Variance 12 is the five-foot pathway. I think that's the same as one of the waivers. We are maximizing parking. The loading space, the tax commissioner does not receive any trucks that cannot fit in a standard space, and is, would much prefer having the additional parking instead of a loading zone that they'll never use. They will use the parking spaces. They would never use a loading zone. Matt, do we have any more?
That's the ones that we've recommended denial on. Did you want to go through the, any ones that we recommended approval on? Before we go further?
I think the ones we've approved on, I don't know that we need to review, because we're agreeable with those, as we said.
Very good, because we're buttoned up right against 10 minutes right now.
Okay. Sorry, I went so long.
That's okay. No, you didn't. You right up against 10 minutes. I did, before we go any further, I just want to let you all know that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. For now, we'll ask for those wishing to speak in opposition. Very good. All right. So, we'll move forward to what'd normally be the work session portion of this, and ask the council if they have any questions for the staff and/or the applicant. All right. Hearing none. Thank you very much. I will say, after spending three and a half hours over two days at the DeKalb Tag Office this week, they need more parking.
I had a question. I was waiting for you to get through with your comedy routine. I'm just kidding. Mr. Connolly, the two things I'd be interested in is an interparcial access, maybe easement for, and then maybe have conditions that is, I'm more concerned about the future than I am about the current use. And so, I wouldn't want to restrict how the operation is planned now, but I would want to have it tied when and if something changes, that that would be in place. So, you know, we could probably work on the language of that, how that interparcial access easement agreement would work. I know there's a wall there, and I know all that stuff, and it makes it physically impossible to do today, but I've seen it happen. Things change. And the second was, it looks like, it looks strangely like Lagarde. I don't know if that's by accident.
It's the existing building we didn't.
But the concrete side panels in Lagarde, you know, they, there's some sort of wood, I don't know if it's by accident, but it looks like somebody took, the concrete looks, has like a wood texture on it.
Right. There were wood forms used for the concrete to give.
Was that intentional, the look, or is it just kind of something that happened?
No, that's, in Lagarde, it was intentional.
So, maybe that's how you address some of these concrete walls, if you have any of these, I don't know if you're talking about existing walls or creating new concrete walls.
We're not creating any new ones. We don't know what decorative material is going to be the right one. We haven't had time to fully address it, but we will meet the intent of that, and it will look better.
Sure.
Very good. Anything else? Darren? No? No? Oh, okay. Well, seeing as how I waited an inordinate amount of time before I started my first comedy routine, before I started my second comedy routine, I'll ask again. John, did you have anything else you wanted to ask?
I thought Brian raised his hand.
Oh, Brian. You got something? No? All right. JR, thanks for being here.
Mayor, I do just want to say, though, that I think they have done a really good job with an existing building, and I am very excited to be removing a billboard.
All right. Yes, aren't we all?
Thank you for that.
Great. All right. The next item on the agenda is PZ 2020-640, which is 1723 Harts Mill Road, the Preservate Harts Mill, variances and waivers. Matt, before you get started, I believe councilmember customer has something he'd like to say.
Yes, Your Honor. I am recusing myself from the following agenda item. As previously disclosed, I have a financial interest in the project and longstanding business relationship with the applicant.
Very good. Thank you very much. Matt, take it away.
Yes, Mayor.
Are there people outside that want to come in? I'm sorry.
I don't know. Are there? Yep, there they come. Here they come, walking down the street. Everybody stop saying bad things about Julie. All right. Since we have a bunch of new faces in here, I will point out, for those of you that have been here in the past, you'll see something a little different. For those who haven't been in the past, you won't even notice anything, but normally, we would do a public hearing, closeout, and then these items would move forward for discussion at the work session, in order that you all don't have to go out in the parking lot, come back, go out in the parking lot, come back, et cetera. We're going to combine the two this evening. I have already, as the rule stipulated, read the item that's before, before it's here on the agenda, but I'll say it again. It is the known as, it's on 1723 Harts Mill Road, is known as the Preservate Harts Mill variances and waivers. The staff will now read into the record the recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a recommendation, or a application for four variances and one waiver at multiple addresses on Harts Mill Road. The property is Zoned Neighborhood Residential 1 and is a little over an acre. Here, the applicant is proposing to construct four single-family homes. The variances, the first variances, the variance is to not provide the required 50% frontyard landscaping for lots 2, 3, and 4. The second is to increase the amount of impervious surface from 45% to 50% on Lot 3. The third variance is to decrease the minimum lot width from 55 feet wide to 10 feet wide for lots 2, 3, and 4. The fourth variance is to not install the required streetscape, and the fifth variance is to exceed the 30% maximum encroachment for a, this critical root zone of two boundary trees, without the consent of the neighboring property owner. The applicant is proposing to build a four-lot, single-family residential subdivision with one single home on each lot. You'll see in the site plan that they do have a flag lot configuration with a shared driveway. According to the application, the homes range from about 8,000 to 18,000 square feet, and based on the sample architecture provided by the applicant, they're two-story homes. The applicant is also proposing underground detention on a portion of lots 3 and 4, and while a variance has been requested for the streetscape, they have proposed to provide a fee-in lieu for the future construction of that streetscape and the amount not to exceed $5,000. Here's the site plan, again, showing the subdivision. It did go through the conservation subdivision plating process previously, so the five lots do consist today. I did want to point out, make one clarification, that the staff report does state that since the applicant did not receive an LDP, that the five-lot subdivision would revert to a single lot. That was based on legal advice from our previous land use attorney. The applicant's attorney, Ms. Sellers, did seek reconfirmation of this determination when she got involved in the application, and since the publication of the staff report, our current council has advised us that the five-lot subdivision would remain. It is a valid five-lot subdivision because it was previously approved through a final plat. Therefore, it could be developed as a five-lot subdivision, but would still need to be developed as a conservation subdivision and meet the requirements of conservation subdivisions. However, as you'll see in this application, the applicant has stated they're not proceeding in conservation subdivision at this time, and if that was, is the case, and they proceed with a new subdivision, it would require a new plat, according to the current regulations. I just wanted to clarify that. And we'll update that for the staff report before Tuesday. Here is the site plan, so you can see the Lot 1 does have frontage on Harts Mill Road. The three other lots are flag lots with a shared driveway. And the applicant has submitted architecture, showing you what the homes would look like, and then some site photos showing you the, what the lot looks like. There was a single-family home here originally, but was, has since been removed. Staff has recommended approval in part and denial in part. We have approved, put some conditions of approval, just the standard condition, and then the condition regarding the fee-in lieu. We did recommend that the fee-in lieu be based on actual construction amount. And then, we did recommend approval of that streetscape variance with that condition of fee-in lieu. However, we have recommended denial of the remaining requests. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. John, do you have anything to add? No? Okay. Very good. All right. Those wishing to speak in favor, keep in mind, we'll have 10 minutes for this portion, and then we'll also, after this, we'll have 10 minutes for those wishing to speak in opposition. The time will start when I drop the green flag. Oh, no, just kidding. Julie, you're going to have to run, really.
Good evening. Julie Sellers here, 1776 Peachtree, here on behalf of the applicant Falcon Real Estate Investments, regarding the five parcels on Harts Mill, known as the Preservate Harts Mill. I think it's important to note the fact that we now have confirmation that this is and has been a five-lot recorded plat. This is a five-lot community today and can be developed as such. I think that the opposition that I have seen, as well as the staff report, unfortunately, I think, had a lot of information, a lot of materials, a lot of analysis, really on a faulty premise, and a faulty premise that this was a single lot. So, before you is a development proposal that is reducing the density from five lots to four lots, and this is in our one, the four lots, range from 8,000 to 18,000 square feet. I have before you just a graphic that shows the lots in the area in green that are smaller than the smallest lot on the development plan before you. And with that, I would like to reserve my remaining time for rebuttal.
Very good. Thank you. We still have about eight minutes and some change. For those wishing to speak in favor, please come up to the microphone.
Definitely sanitize it after he's done.
There we go.
Randall Rucci, 3661 Teal Road, Shambly. This looks like a good subdivision to me. These homes are going to be on sites that are fairly comparable to everything around it. I've looked at the two Brookhaven sites, I think it's Harts Glen, that are right in the very front. They're, I think, what, .23, .27 acres, where the buildings on the proposed stuff are close to that. Also, on the other side, not considering the 1.1-acre lot, I think it's Harts Run on the other side, they're fairly much the same, ranging from .39, I believe, to as little as .18 acres. So, small lots, big homes. It's in character with everything else. Knowing that I live in the old part of Sexton Woods, a lot of us are on .3, .4 acres. Our homes are much smaller and have much more land space. I think this is a great use of land. I'd like to see it go through. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Rucci.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Very good. That'll leave us about, you know, eight and a half minutes for anyone, seven and a half, excuse me, seven and a half minutes for anyone wishing to speak in rebuttal. So, we will then ask those wishing to speak in opposition. Keep in mind, we've got 10 minutes for this, so we'll go for the first person who would like to come up and talk with us, please. I guess you got to turn it on.
Okay. Sorry. It looked like the light was on. So, Doug Morehouse, 1731 Harts Mill Road, live right next door. Say a lot about this property. First of all, I guess most importantly, I don't think it's in character at all. So, what we're talking about here is something I don't think exists anywhere in Shambly, which is a stacked flag lot. And when the gentleman's discussing the lot sizes of .23, .27 acres, these are actually smaller than that, and part of these lots is essentially a road that's being considered as a front yard. I went out and measured Harts Mill Road. It's 24 feet wide. This driveway, which is actually a front yard, is 20 feet wide. So, in essence, you're putting in a street and calling it part of the yard. So, I think it doesn't look anything like the neighboring houses or developments. Could say a lot more about, I'll leave it to others.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Morgan, 3748 Donaldson Drive, and I'll be the property behind the proposed new development. Shambly's for smart growth, and four homes on such a small piece of land is not smart. One home is smart. Two homes works perfect. We have large acreage tracts where we have many lots in our neighborhood of .3 and .5 acres. So, it's not keeping in character, and it just should not be allowed to go through. In summary, the property is zoned currently for development as a single-family home, and ultimately, that's what I would propose, and that's what I would support, another single-family home surrounded by other single-family homes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is Steven Morse, 3736 Harts Place, Shambly, Georgia. I've been a resident of Shambly for 32 years, and am currently president of the Harts Place Homeowners Association. I have a petition that has been signed by 69 homeowners of Harts Place, and we are all against the granting of the variances to this property. We feel that the effect on our property values will be negative. We feel that the additional impact on traffic is going to be hard to deal with, especially on Harts Mill, and we feel that the runoff from this development is going to seriously impact some of the homes in our development. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come up, please. There we go.
Hello. My name's Peter Young. I live at 1685 Hartford Glen. In that picture, I own the, on the left side, I own the second house from the top, and as you can see in that picture, the back corner of my house is going to be about 20 yards from that shared driveway. Now, that driveway's 300 feet long. It's the length of a football field, and there are going to be all kinds of vehicular traffic going up and down that driveway, very close to the back corner of my house. Delivery trucks, UPS trucks, Amazon trucks, FedEx trucks. Delivery trucks, UPS trucks, Amazon trucks, FedEx trucks, the homeowners themselves coming and going. And so I would just ask you to not grant this flag lot configuration, and I would encourage a developer to revisit this with maybe, with one or maybe two homes on it, so that myself and Heather Manso, who owns the other house above me in the picture, are not gonna have that kind of traffic going past the backs of our homes, because basically that driveway is right on the property line. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We've got about six minutes left in this, for those in opposition.
Hi, good evening, my name is Brian Burns. I live at 1672 Runnymede Road. I'm the house that borders the back of that lot on the left side. And I've sent opposition letters, I've sent a public comment email for official record for this. I'm not gonna rehash all of that, I'm strongly opposed to that, as are the, every single neighbor who surrounds that, eight of them, have sent their opposition to this development. Not a single one approves. I have learned the Shambly codes way more than I ever dreamed I had to. I've talked with the planning department, they have stated that not even two houses can fit on this lot as currently zoned. I think there's, you have 350 residents on a petition against this proposal, you have many, many emails sent over the last week, there's strong opposition. I do not think, I just don't see how the council can approve this based on the staff recommending four, against four of the variances. So, being that as it may, I also want to mention that having studied the code so long, the root problem here is the flag lot problem. The codes mention nothing of it, they don't support it, there's no way to tell where a front yard is on the flag lot, there's no way, there's no front yards in these, if you ask 20 different people, they can't tell you where the front of these houses are. So I would just recommend humbly that as soon as possible, add something to the Shambly ordinances, either explicitly prohibiting flag lots or putting codes around this so there's no ambiguity. And I would say to do it now, sooner than later, because this is, this will keep coming up. This isn't a regularly shaped lot that you don't see anywhere else, and I would suggest going ahead and banning them, because I think they're out of character, but if not, put codes in to support this. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? We had some time for rebuttal, if anyone wishing to speak in favor would care to rebut, we got about, what'd I say, about five minutes left in that. Ms. Sellers, come on up.
Matt, if you could cue up the PowerPoint for me. Okay, great, the next slide. Again, I think, you know, just one of the fundamental problems, and I recognize, this is, it's a problem for the opposition, it's a problem for the staff, everyone has been going under this erroneous expectation that this is one lot, and it's not. It's five lots, the configuration is what is allowable under the code. And we may not love it as residents, as staff, as council members, but the reality is, it is allowable. There is nothing wrong with the plan that was approved, and quite frankly, the four lots, reducing the density, also complies with the code. If we could go to the next slide. Again, this is just showing where it is, if we could go to the next one, this is just some contextual pictures. This is, there are lots of cluster communities, and I think what you will see, and what this kinda comes into play when we talk about the lot width, is there's a difference between the lot width and the lot frontage. The lot frontage is defined under Shambly's code, as well as others, as that portion of the property that's right at the right-of-way. That is not what Shambly defines as the lot width. So if you'll go to the next slide, please, again, just other pictures, maybe the next one. Getting to the variances, and again, to be clear, this isn't a one versus four, this is a five to four, a reduction. And this was done in an attempt to try to appease and work with some of the concerns that were raised. And unfortunately, I think probably because of a lack of accurate information and an expectation that an opposition to this variance would result in one house instead of multiple houses, we've got a lot of information that's been submitted. But getting to the variances that were requested, the staff has recommended approval of paying in lieu of the streetscape because of the streetscape that's already out there, I won't spend a lot of time on that. If we could go to the next one. This front yard landscaping, this was requested for lots two through four. Again, the intent, as I understand it, has been for visually, as you're driving down the right-of-way, to see the landscaping. That is certainly met here. The reality is, we could meet this and not seek the variance with the four lots configured on this property, and make sure that we landscape the 50% of the lot. Based on where the neighbors had complained about the placement of the homes, that was what resulted in this four lot and where the buildings are placed, and the request for this reduction. Again, it could be satisfied, it was requested because that would help us achieve what some of the neighbors had indicated they had concerns with. If we can skip to the next one, the next one is talking about the impervious surface. Again, this is kind of how the lots are divvied up, again, four lots, and this was requested for lot number three. The request is 5% of additional impervious coverage. Similarly, we, in an effort to be transparent, I think we went above and beyond saying, here's what we would like, because this is the plan that we thought had some support. Again, if the 5% of impervious is not agreeable, the lot lines can be configured so that the impervious surface could be satisfied on all four lots. So again, this was trying to work and reach some sort of resolution, and I really regret the fact that I think people got dug in because they thought that this was gonna be one lot or nothing. And that's just not where we are. And I think that that's a really important point to keep making, I don't wanna keep beating it. But Matt, if you could flip to the next. Again, lot width, okay, this is where I've provided some comparisons. I had been doing zoning in a lot of different jurisdictions, and I'll tell you, DeKalb flat out prohibits flag lots. That was something I learned way back, one of my first cases with Doug, had to do with the flag lot. So I know that for the county and the unincorporated. But I think what's interesting, and when you look at Brookhaven, you look at DeKalb, they equate lot frontage and lot width. And so that's where you end up with the same width of the property at the road, and then you go back, you got that minimum at the road. And that's just not what Shambly's code says. In fact, when you look at Shambly's code, it does specify for cul-de-sac lots, that the cul-de-sac lots have to provide that minimum lot width at the front yard setback line. Cul-de-sac lots only. And that's an important distinction that can't be overlooked. So what we have are four lots that satisfy the minimum 55 lot width. We've got 70, 80, 90, and 98 feet wide lots. If we could flip to the next slide, please.
Julie, if you can wrap it up pretty quick, you're running right up against your time.
Okay, sure. And so again, with the lot width, that is not a technical variance based on the code, we were, that was in overabundance and out of caution, based on some concerns with interpretations that we have had. Similarly, with the tree preservation, there is a boundary tree that is dead, and the critical root zone cannot exist to preserve a tree that is dead. A dead tree cannot come back to life, a dead tree is hazardous. You don't have to go very far to see a park in a neighboring jurisdiction that is in honor and in memory of people that were killed by a dead tree falling. So, you know, similarly, going on to the split tree trunk, this is again where I don't think we need a waiver because we satisfy the code, but again, it's a difference in interpretation. We are not going to encroach in more than 30% of that split trunk tree that is a boundary tree, that's what the code says. But if you go to a different section, and that's what has been applied here, talking about 20% out of an abundance of caution, we were asking for that relief. And I will wrap it up and happy to answer questions. Thank you.
And that's what we're gonna go to right now. Thank you very much. All right. At this point, as I've mentioned earlier, normally this would fall to later in the agenda. I will move that up right now and allow the council, ask the council if they would care to ask any questions of the staff or the applicant. No, sir. Sorry, that time came and went.
We don't get to rebuttal?
No, no, sir, that's not, I'm sorry, you know what, if you'd like, since y'all weren't in here, I'll read them again, all right? The rules of order for public hearings, zoning matters, city code, section 280-2, the hearing shall be decided over by the mayor. After calling the hearing to order, the mayor shall request that the parcel of the property, which are the subject of the zoning proposal be identified and read. Following such identification and reading, the development director's recommendations shall be presented, the mayor and city council shall cause. The director's written recommendation may made part of the record. Proponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning the zoning decision. If all 10 minutes are not used, the proponents' remaining time may be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reduced, but may be expended by majority vote, provided they expend it equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come to the microphone and give their name and address. City clerk, do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. I do recognize that because of the whole COVID rules and all, y'all probably weren't in here to hear those rules, as I read them at the very beginning of the meeting, more than likely, I should probably read those every time y'all walk in here new. Our rules have been the same since I've been here for 18 years. The rebuttal time is reserved for those wishing to speak in favor. So at this point, we would normally just roll this to the work session, we're going to then now move it up to this point, and I'll ask the council again if they have any questions for the staff and/or the applicant. All right, hearing none?
Well, we have, well, I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Karen, it's so hard to see, you gotta, you gotta speak up.
I know, I know, I'm sorry, I gotta yell.
Wave your green thing.
Wave my green thing.
Yes, there you go. Yeah, oh, I see Karen.
Okay. I, I can't see that very well, but it, no, it's okay, I figured out where it was on the map that I have in front of me. The only, the only thing that bugs me a little bit is that, well, not the only thing, but the areas that you have pictures of, and a lot of the areas on that map are either, with one exception, zoned NR2, or they're in Brookhaven. And anything that's in Brookhaven is out of our jurisdiction, and I really don't have an opinion about. There isn't anything in Shambly that is currently zoned NR1 that looks like this. There's those four homes along Shambly Dunwoodie that all face Shambly Dunwoodie, and it's a lot of concrete, but they're all facing the road, they're kinda, you know, traditional houses facing the road. The examples that you have are examples of cluster homes, but they're not NR1 cluster homes in general. Like I said, there's one that's actually in Shambly that isn't NR1. But I do, I do understand what you're saying about the five lots. It's not, it's not a once and done lot. I personally got, and I know all of us got, a lot of emails that said, this needs to, this lot needs to be built according to NR1 code, which is one house on the lot. And that's not correct technically. So I want to mitigate some sort of disappointment. Whatever happens with this lot, no matter what happens with this lot, it's very, very, very likely that more than one home's gonna go on that lot. So nobody likes change, I get it. But I have reservations about this because really, there is nothing in Shambly that looks like this. There isn't anything in Shambly that looks like this. Zoned NR1, and if we wanna talk about rezoning, we can talk about that all day long, you wanna talk about flag lots, we can talk about it. But that's not what's being asked for. So those are my words of caution to those in opposition, and my reservations with this.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have any questions? No? Having said none, I'll point one thing out, and this is not speaking in favor or opposed to this particular development. Karen, you wouldn't know this, as I mentioned earlier, I've been at this quite a while, I'm very familiar with the Harts Place subdivision. My backyard backs up to the Harts Place subdivision. That subdivision was zoned NR1 when it was built.
Oh, seriously?
And every house in that subdivision was built with a variance. We had to rezone it because after, when I bought my house, it was about, Harts Place was about 15 years old, and as people were wanting to at that point, you start to think about additions, closing in porches, et cetera. A Harts Place became, you know, it was like a line out the door for people in Harts Place trying to get in here, and it became prudent to just zone the property, which was what my property had been zoned under when we redid everything, which was the NR2. There was, there was never any move to rezone anything further up to where the two lots that kinda remained, or there are two lots there, one in question and the one next door. So that's just, that's, that's an issue you get into when you, when you grant a bunch of variances for a single family. And again, it's, it's not either for it or against it. I will tell everybody, I live on a lot that's less than .3, it's probably about .24 acres. I'm not gonna say that I like them or dislike them, but I live on one, but I just point that out for reference. So I think that was all the-
Thanks for, thanks for setting me straight.
No, I'm not setting you straight. I just, you know what, sometimes I think it's important to play the old man and try to give some context to whatever it is we're discussing.
Well, you play it well.
Yeah, well. God, it's beat-up Eric night. All right, we're gonna move forward, appreciate y'all being here. The next item on the agenda, y'all stick around for, I know y'all get up and leave because it's not all exciting, but this is actually where the stuff happens that determines the things that we talked about in one through four, and that is that we have a 2020 semi-annual UDO amendment.
Yes, Mayor, I'm gonna keep making the title a little longer and longer.
Yeah.
It used to be annual, semi-annual, then we'll do, you know, something else, just to make it-
Weekly? What do we do?
Yeah, exactly. Come up with something, come up with something fun. If I do, then Mesa's gonna give me a hard time for my comedy routine.
All right, let me get, I'm going the wrong way, that's what's going on, wow. Bear with me. All right, as you recall, last month, I presented to you the semi-annual UDO amendment as a heads up to give you some time to look at it, provide us with some feedback, which we have received from a few of you, and then got some good feedback during the meeting last month. Well, since that time, we've advertised it, so this is the official public hearing, because as you know, changes to the UDO go through the Zoning Procedures Act. So this is the UDO amendment, again, not a lot of major policy changes at this point. Most of these are pretty minor clarifications and cleaning things up, including the ones on the first slide. Second slide, we did, this is a policy change, we did prohibit private bus stations throughout the city where they are currently permitted in a few zoning districts. We talked about this last time, clarifying construction offices. It just wasn't clear that there was a differentiation, and that a contractor's office, if you're not storing machinery, is just treated like any other professional office. Convertible space, we talked about that, that's just to make the rail trail similar to storefront streets, where you can do a certain amount of non-residential-esque convertible space. Gravel driveways, we had a lengthy discussion on. I did make some changes after last time, so I would love your feedback tonight or between now and Tuesday. What I heard was that we did wanna allow some gravel, more as parking areas as opposed to driveways. So we have changed, it's section 25012, page 393 of your packet. Gravel driveways, gravel driveways are prohibited, however, gravel parking areas shall meet the following standards. Gravel parking areas may not be located within 15 feet of any property line, so that's to make sure, that stops the gravel from migrating into the street. So we talked about making sure a certain distance, you know, they weren't close to the street. And then kept those requirements, that they have the sustainable, substantially durable border constructed of wood, concrete, brick, or stone, extending a minimum of one inch below the depth of the gravel. The border shall prevent the migration of gravel from the parking area, so that one came over. Again, gravel parking areas must be at least four inches deep. And then, and added another restriction based on your input, was gravel parking area shall be properly maintained with compressed gravel or compacted crushed stone on top of an appropriate, on an appropriate underlayment material. So I think that checks all the boxes, but please take a look and appreciate any feedback that you would like to provide on that item. So that clarifies that. The 280 we talked about last time, limiting applicant requested deferrals to a maximum of two. The PUD book, making sure that the redevelopment thresholds table in that document- The PUD book, making sure that the redevelopment thresholds table in that document complies with the same one that's in the UDO. The other change we discussed was the construction hour. So in your amendment, we have added that holidays will be treated like weekends, and we did select the major holidays based on Councilman Kussman's recommendation, and those are New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. So that has been added to the code. In addition, Councilman Kussman had also made some recommendations for changes to the private party inspections. I believe I've made most of those, but if you could take a look at that and just let me know if there's any feedback or anything I missed, mainly clarifying that this applies to building permits, not land disturbance, adding some liability language in terms of us doing final inspections but not necessarily taking fault in any inspections that occurred prior to that if a private party did decide to, or a builder decided to use a third-party inspector. So that is all I have.
Feedback. Darren?
Yeah. First, I want to thank you, Matt, for making those changes. The holiday hours thing, I think we all were involved in, Leslie, I remember you mentioning it as well. We got some complaints from folks working, I think it was Memorial Day last year? You'd remember better than me. And so appreciate you making those no-work days. As Matt said, the changes I requested to the inspections ordinance was really just clarifying that it only applied to building permits versus applying to building and LDP because there was some confusion. If it pleases the council, I do have an agenda item under my name later in the evening about adoption of Petrie Creek Greenway Universal Standards for the Greenway and incorporating it into the amendment. I would like to discuss that now, since we're talking about the amendment, if that's all right.
Sounds germane to me.
So in summary, the Petrie Creek Greenway has been identified as a trail of regional significance and traverses the cities of Atlanta, Brookhaven, Shambly, Dorville, and parts of unincorporated DeKalb County. The Greenway team has identified a set of minimum requirements to ensure consistency in design, implementation, and operation across these jurisdictions while simultaneously ensuring that each city has the opportunity to create their own sense of place along the path. I'm requesting that council adopt these minimum specifications, which differ slightly from those of our local multi-use paths, specifically for the Petrie Creek Greenway as shown in the multimodal transportation plan and adjusted as needed as part of the current UDO amendment. Again, this is specific to the Greenway and not to any other paths in the city. I'd also ask that we adopt specific designs for the benches, trash receptacles, lightings, and other items described and identified in the Spark Park Design Manual adopted by the council, as well as lighting from the streetscape or rail trail specifications as determined to be appropriate by the city manager, his designee. And lastly, that all lighting shall be dark sky lighting to ensure that there's minimal light pollution. The team did prepare a comparison of, the Greenway team did prepare a comparison of the Greenway specs and the rail trail specs. I've provided that and just appreciate the team letting us kind of make it our own. As this comes through, particularly Century Center, I think if they do some redevelopment, there'll likely be some changes, which is expected. And then the last item is, I was notified today that there was a mistake in the design specs they gave us. It should be open from 6:00 to 11:00, not 7:00 to 11:00 as included in the packet, if we could correct that.
Very good. Is there any discussion from the council on this particular item before we open it up? No? Okay, very good. Was there any other feedback from Matt? All right, as you review these, council, please give Matt some feedback. I know, Leslie, the gravel is near and dear to your heart. I'm sure there's some other things on there. Please take a look at it.
Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but since this is a public hearing, we'll need to call for anyone in favor and opposition just to cover the bases. I don't think we did that.
No, I'm sorry. I don't quite understand, Matt. You're gonna help me with my procedures, rules, procedure here.
So if it's a UDO amendment, it needs to follow the same thing as a zoning public hearing, so we do staff presentation. We call if anybody would like to speak in the public-
Oh, right. I completely forgot that.
Last time, we didn't do that because it was just FYI.
You're helping me tremendously. Darren threw me for a loop when he decided to move his item up, and then I kind of thought that's where we were. Okay, very good. Anyone, COVID, man, I tell you what. Anyone out there wish to speak in favor? Sure, come on up. Please give your name and address to the city clerk. We'll have 10 minutes. Oh, sorry, bud, you gotta turn the microphone on.
Thanks for everyone's time. My name's Tim McGinn. I live in the Hillcrest neighborhood. Appreciate Darren, Eric, and Brian. You guys responded to an email a couple weeks ago regarding the Greenway and just my neighborhood's interest in making that happen, specifically adopting the standards. I've lived in my neighborhood the past six years, been very impressed with the progress this team has made just in Shambly overall, just in my time here. It's improved tremendously. I thank each of you for efforts for that. I'm here tonight to support the adoption of the PCG design standards. Councilman Kussman, thanks for putting this on the agenda. I really appreciate that. The adoption of these standards is a big deal to me, my neighbors, and Shambly residents. The Model Mile is complete with these standards, and it's truly a best-in-class trail. Incorporating these standards would elevate Shambly, create connectivity to existing paths, which would be a game changer for Shambly and its surrounding cities. I live next to Century Center, right along the Petrie Creek. This phase through Shambly would be a critical connection point, not just for Shambly residents, but connecting Shambly to the greater Atlanta area via Path 400 and the Belt Line. After a long and expensive process to annex Century Center into Shambly, it would be fitting to provide Shambly residents with some ROI on that project. Incorporating these standards is a great step for us, and think about the injection of energy and development that it would put into Century Center. A huge tax opportunity for the city, multipurpose development, et cetera. I'm here because we're excited. When new neighbors move to my neighborhood, the first thing we talk about is when the Greenway is gonna come. Again, thank you for everything you guys have done to make Shambly a great place to live.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right. I'm back on track. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the UDO, overall UDO, semi-annual, 2020 semi-annual UDO amendment?
Hi there. My name is Frances Kelly. I work for the Petrie Creek Greenway. I am a summer intern there, and I want to first of all thank Councilman Kussman for bringing this topic up. This is something I have personally been working really hard on, and I really appreciate his moving this along. So as he brought up there, I just want to make sure everyone is clear that there is just a small error of one hour time with the, with the movement of, in the opening of the Greenway. And I think that this, I'm gonna be very brief in my, but that I want to encourage every single one of you before our next meeting and before the vote, that you go out to the Model Mile, that you go and see, if you haven't already, why these standards are in place, and see what will be in Shambly, and see and understand why we want to create a seamless design and a seamless path through all these jurisdictions. So thank you all so much for your time, and have a great evening.
Great, we appreciate you being here. All right, anyone else wish to speak in favor? All right, is there anyone who should speak in opposition to the 2020 semi-annual UDO amendment? Cool. As usual, staff is keeping me in line, so now I'll ask the council if they have any questions.
I just got one quick thing. I appreciate y'all thanking me, but I don't think I deserve the credit. I think that belongs to everyone up here. I think everyone up here's worked really hard on making Shambly more bikeable and walkable. I don't think any one of us has, you know, necessarily pushed that more than the other, so I appreciate it, but I do want to say I think it's a little bit misguided and want to thank my peers for everything they're doing on that front.
Great, thank you, Darren. We will have a fire pit, marshmallows, we'll all sing kumbaya here a little later. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, without any objections, COVID rules, I'm gonna go ahead. Any objections to adjourning? No. I will adjourn the public hearing. I will then call to order the work session for, I gotta look at the agenda, July 16, 2020. Ah, says there, starts at 6:00 PM. How about that? All right, I called to order. I don't believe we have any announcements or presentations under staff action items. We got city clerk. We have the approval of minutes. There is A, B, C, D, E, and F. Apparently, we were actually working hard last month. We have a public hearing, called meeting, public hearing, public hearing, public hearing, regular meeting. Does the council have any comments, questions, discussion for any of those items under the approval of minutes? Woo-hoo. Way to go, Emmy. You got the minutes, all right. All right, nothing under city manager, big star for him. Development department, you can see that we actually went over all of those. I had turned my page to look at Darren's, and that's what confused me. That's my excuse, and I'm sticking with it. Y'all will notice, if you join us regularly, our staff is doing a phenomenal job of trying to keep these meetings as short as possible, so I'll stop rambling on, but we're trying to keep things so that we don't have to keep everybody here a long time. We don't have anything under board authorities committee, city attorney. On Tuesday evening, for those of you that don't know, we do readings on Tuesday evening. I don't believe, do we need to move the UDO amendment to first read?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, so if I don't have objection, then I'll ask the city clerk to move the 2020 semi-annual UDO amendment to first read for Tuesday evening. Hearing no objection by consent, that will take place. Mayor and council items, everybody gets a gold star, well, except, you know, Councilman Kussman, as much as, you know, your fans out there may like you, we all like, didn't want you putting, no, I'm just kidding. So we can, we took care of Darren's item just a minute ago. Councilmember Mock has some extremely important things for us to discuss here tonight. Brian, I'm going to turn it over to you. Actually, I'm just gonna let you take it over on your items 1 through 4, if you would, please.
So not only do I not get a gold star, I get demerits, correct?
You do, absolutely. You're gonna have to, you know, walk, walk with a rifle across the Tarso in the rain.
Before I begin, Mr. Mayor, if it would please the council, I'd like to suspend the rules to add an item to the agenda. This would be item number 5, and it would be entitled COVID testing.
Very good. So there's been a motion to suspend rules to add an item to the agenda.
I'll second.
Second that. Nope, we got a second from Darren. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Bye.
Passes unanimously. Brian, if you would make a motion to actually state what that item is, as you have done previously?
COVID testing.
Right, so a motion to add, so COVID testing, right. So first thing we did procedurally, I know we don't do this very often, thank God, we have to make a motion to suspend the rules. We've done that. Now we need to add an item to the agenda.
Motion to add an item to the agenda entitled COVID testing.
Second.
Ah, look at that, man, before Darren could get on it. Woo-hoo. All right, so we have a motion second then to add COVID testing to the agenda under Councilmember Mock, who will be thoroughly flogged once we leave the meeting. All those in favor? You all get flogged.
Bye.
Very good. All right, so we will now have a number 5 on there, which is COVID testing. So Mr. Mock, please, take it away.
Dr. Ashurn. Item number 1, charter change. There was a couple of items here. There's the reading of ordinances and the change to provide for what constitutes a quorum. I'd like to discuss both of those items as part of a charter change. I was a little taken aback because I remembered that we had talked about both of these items a couple of times over the years. I did not realize that back in 2018, we had the city attorney to actually draw up the ordinance to change both of those, and for whatever reason at the time, we decided not to do it. I don't remember why, maybe somebody else here does, but, but it was never initiated. But I would like to look at both of these because we've had some issues to come up. As you know, everything that we do as far as an ordinance change has to go through two reads. So if it's introduced in January, and it's something that is of urgency, we have no option to go ahead and adopt that in January. We have to wait till February. So it can, it can be a very time-long-awaited scenario. I needed to ask a question, though, because I wasn't clear about state law on zoning issues, and maybe Matt can answer that question for me. When it comes to ordinances and second, first and second reads, a zoning ordinance is required to have two reads, correct?
That's incorrect. There's, it's just a local decision. There's no state law for that.
Okay, so for zoning ordinances, I would propose that we leave that at two reads, specifically for transparency and to allow for folks to have time to look and, and chime in on these things. But for a lot of the things that we do, not only are two reads not necessary, but having the city attorney to actually sit there and read through all of this stuff is not really necessary. We should, we should have read through this ourselves long before we got here. So I would open that up, I guess, for, can I do that, Mayor, to open that portion up?
Sorry, I turned my mic off. So, so no, let's, I mean, if anyone would like, and I'll chime in first. I usually go last, but I will agree, Brian, I know we've had these conversations. It's my recollection that at, you know, when we discussed it, there just wasn't, I don't know, maybe enough history, enough emphasis, enough reason to kind of move it forward at that time. You and I have discussed this at length, and I completely understand. There does seem to be coming up regularly with both the issue of first reads, actually having the city attorney to read through things, as well as, as well as the quorum issue. So I appreciate you putting it on the agenda. Actually, talking with you for some time, I think you're probably, I think you are right that this would be the time to move those things forward. Anyone else?
I have to agree with Brian on his zoning matters being done the second read.
Yeah.
Because that's definitely something that you can't undo necessarily the next month. If you approve a project or approve a rezoning and a transaction goes through, you can't unwind that as easily as you can say if the smoking ban was too restrictive and you wanted to undo it, then you can always reverse it the next month or whenever you want. Zoning matters do not have that, so I think you still need that time delay.
John, I'm glad you brought that up because I think you're right. That reminded me of one thing, and Brian and I, and actually John, you and I talked about this. One of the things was, in an effort to make sure that there was time for the council and the public to review anything that was brought forward, I think you're right. I think the zoning issues is something that is good, that we do it two months, two meetings back-to-back, so I think that's also good, Brian. I appreciate you bringing that up, John, for mentioning that. Anything else? I will point out, I find it kind of interesting, I've always wondered after 18 years of why we read ordinances out, and I kind of came to the conclusion that, you know, at a certain period of time, and maybe not, unfortunately not that long ago, there were folks that were illiterate within our community and couldn't read for themselves, and I think that's probably why. I don't know, maybe some scholarly person could tell me, but that, you know, I mentioned that to Brian, and he said, yeah, probably some of the council members as well. And I said, well, yeah, you know, or the mayor.
I take offense.
Yes, I know. No, I'm not throwing Brian under the bus. I'm actually the one that says I think I've served with some council members that are illiterate. But anyway, that's just a mayor-council thing. All right, Brian, I don't think there's anything else on that one. I think, you know, Tuesday evening, if you care to move that forward, it sounds like you probably have some support.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Number 2?
Number 2, resolution to require face coverings. This is something that we have all been talking about and dealing with, and-
I'm sorry, wasn't there a second part to the charter change?
Well, the quorum, we talked about that, right?
We did.
Did you want to talk more about the quorum?
I, I, I must have missed it because I didn't. Yeah, Karen said she missed it, too, so I-
Well, I guess I say, John, I brought it up as I was, as I was reviewing what the things that Brian had discussed, but if you'd like to talk about the quorum change, we can do that as well.
Oh, I wasn't listening when you were talking, I'm sorry.
Well, of course.
So as you know, there's been situations where we've had council members that have either been late or absent, and there's been at least one instance where we weren't able to conduct a meeting because a couple of people were sick. to conduct a meeting because a couple of people were sick, and, and so we had talked about this again back in 2018, and it basically says, "The mayor or the mayor pro tem and three council members shall constitute a quorum," as opposed to all of us. "Once a quorum is established, the quorum cannot be defeated by subsequent departure of a council member. The affirmative vote of three council members shall decide any question pending before them." So it would still take an affirmative vote of three council members. "When the mayor or the mayor pro tem are both present at the meeting, the mayor pro tem shall vote as any other council member. When the mayor is not present, the mayor pro tem shall, shall not vote, except in the case of a tie."
That's current rules, right?
No, that's what we're changing to.
Okay, so is this, is this in overall agenda items, or is this just for, to get the public hearing? Because that's, I thought that was the, the big... Read it, read it to me again, I'm sorry. Let's second, just the part about how many, the, what's required for affirmative vote.
"An affirmative vote of three council members shall decide any question pending before them. When the mayor or the ma, and the mayor pro tem are both present at the meeting, the mayor pro tem shall vote as any other council member. When the mayor is not present, the mayor pro tem shall not vote, except in the case of a tie." So, uh, it's over here. So potentially, three affirmative votes would, would be all that is needed, and, and two of those, two of those could be, well, actually, John, correct me if I'm wrong, it could be two to one, right?
So currently, it's, the requirement is four plus the mayor or mayor pro tem, so five people, five council members plus the mayor, or four council members plus the mayor or mayor pro tem must be here, which really only gives room for one not to be here. Go, this, the way it's written that you just read, would allow a quorum with three plus the mayor or mayor pro tem, but it would still require three votes for something to pass.
So a two to one wouldn't carry the day?
A two to one would not carry.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So then, I'll have to go back into my Roberts Rules of Order, but I've read this, that, that could put us in the case of a tie, which most bodies try to, you know, avoid, but if we end up with a two-two tie, I believe that a motion does not move...
That's correct.
At that point, right?
That's correct.
Under Roberts Rules of Order. So if it becomes a two-two tie, it doesn't pass, therefore, you have to have three votes still, just like we do currently.
Correct.
Okay.
If I recall correctly in reading it, there were provisions, some provisions in there as well, if that were to happen, or there was one other case where it would carry forward to the next month, or could be carried forward to the next month. Brian, I don't know if you recall that in there or not.
I, I can't even hear you.
So I recall some provisions being in there, where if that happened, it carried forward to the next month, and I think there was one other instance as well, I don't know if you recall seeing that in there or not, I thought I read it in yours.
Uh, it wasn't mine, might have been something that John sent out, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't recall that.
So clarify for me how this solves, because I thought that the problem we were trying to solve was the ability, you know, you have the applicants and all the people show up, and you don't have a quorum, so then you can't have the public hearing, I thought that's what we were trying to solve.
The long and short of it is, 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 the only difference is, right now, if, if one council member is absent, we're okay. If two council members are absent or running late, then we're, we're not able to conduct business, so...
I, I think I would be okay for, if we could do it to where you could still hold the public hearing, but I'm, I'm less okay with creating ordinances with that situation. I don't know if we can do that, if we can have two different...
Nah, I don't, I don't believe you can, John, you need to create, your charter's going to say what your quorum is. You're going to set a quorum that is a quorum for everything, whether you're at a work session and you want to vote, or you're at a retreat, or you're at, whatever you're at, a quorum is a quorum, is a quorum.
It allows us to continue on doing the business of the people, but again, just as, just as in right now, it takes three votes of council to pass anything.
I, I think, if that's what it's saying, then, then I think I'd be okay with that, because it still requires the same three votes regardless of how many people is attending, as attending.
Correct, correct.
And that would, seems like a way of worked around what I guess I was trying to do anyway.
Yeah, it would just, it would just mean one more person could be absent.
Gotcha.
So I, I did find what I was referring to earlier, it was an, an email from the city manager, talking about how we resolve that issue, and he wrote, "We could state that failure to result in three affirmative votes results in a denial of the matter, or it could result in a deferral to the next regular meeting."
I would defer to Roberts Rules of Order, since that's what we follow.
What does Roberts Rules of Order say?
That if it, in the, in the case of a tie, the action vote, action, the motion put forward does not move.
Does not move the same as denied? I'm, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other questions? Hey, this is Groundhog Day for me, guys.
I, I think, I think we have to follow Roberts Rules, I think it's just kind of, it's our crutch that we always lean on, I mean...
You, you don't, okay, this is Groundhog Day for me, guys, because I've been through this discussion a couple of times before, never with this group. We, we have a list, and I have it somewhere, and I gotta blow the dust off of it, but you can do standard procedural rules, you can adopt whatever you want, you make the rules, okay? Unless, as long as it doesn't, you know, interfere with or, or go against, you know, state law and how we're supposed to operate under home rule, you can set forth how you want to operate your meeting here, under what rules of order you want to operate. This city has always operated under Roberts Rules of Order, which most organizations of this type, and actually, quite frankly, most organizations do operate. You can set forth special procedures, which we have, that, there's a list of about eight of them that we've really probably never, ever followed, I try to kind of keep us moving forward. This is one that we've never changed because of this exact debate that has happened in the past. Some folks just don't like it, and they don't like that there can only be, you know, four people here instead of five. So it's all dependent on what you're comfortable with and what you want to change, but you can change to a certain degree, you can't, I don't think you can stipulate what a quorum is under different circumstances, but you can state other standard procedures, it just starts to make things really complicated. Thus, thus, I never carried him forward shortly after I became the mayor.
So the only thing that we're talking about, really, because it seems like we have an agreement about reducing the number for the quorum, but still requiring three votes, but the only thing we're talking about is, what happens if we fail to get three votes? Can it hang around for another month, or can it...
No, it's dead. Well, you, okay, yes, that, you're right, John, that's, that, under Roberts Rules of Order is dead, if you want to make it, and I just think that that may, starts to make things really complicated.
I would, I'm not the only one here, I wish somebody else would give us some feedback on it.
Brian, are you looking to move this forward tonight or Tuesday?
I'm looking to move this forward on Tuesday, but, I mean, just because it's dead at that particular meeting, doesn't mean that it can't be brought up at another meeting.
It can only be brought up by those that were in the majority, it can't be brought up by those that were defeated.
I think...
But in a case of a two-two tie, what would that be?
The two, the two that were on the winning side of it could bring it back forward, the two that were defeated cannot.
I'd like, I'd like some time to look into it a little bit more between now and Tuesday, and maybe talk about it then if we can.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
That's the reason it's never changed.
Just, to be clear, just, just the provision regarding how that's handled?
I, I get it, Darren, it's always just something. All right, I think we beat that horse to death. John, thank you for reminding me that all I did was mention it in passing, because I was hoping to just, you know, fool you, that you caught me, man.
I, I was like, whoa, what had just happened here? I missed, I missed, I, I can fall asleep, but it was, I didn't think I did that.
All right, very good. John, all right, Brian, can we keep moving forward? I'd like to get home before midnight.
Can we talk about face coverings?
Please.
All right, all right. So again, this was a motion to require, or a resolution to require face coverings, and in light of the governor's response yesterday, nullifying all cities' face coverings, ordinances, and, and as I was sitting here, I was, I was sent and was reading that the governor has now initiated a lawsuit against the city of Atlanta's mayor and city council. So the state is now suing the city of Atlanta for, for trying to, in my opinion, do the right thing, but we won't get into the politics of it. This afternoon, I did send out a revised resolution that I'd like to put forth, in the sections of the resolution that had said required, the wording was changed to urge, and the sections where the word must wear, it is should wear, and, and section number two specifically, and I'll just read that one section, "All service establishments, restaurants, retail outlets, grocery stores, pharmacies, and the city of Shambly shall require all employees to wear a mask or face covering that covers their nose and mouth at all times when engaged in face-to-face interaction with other employees or the public." That is not something that is a city ordinance, that is already in the governor's executive order from prior, requiring employees to wear face masks, and it further states here that "we strongly recommend and respectfully request that all establishments require their customers, patrons, members, guests, and visitors to wear a mask or face covering while inside their establishment." And that is really the only significant change to the original resolution. I had a conversation with the city manager this afternoon, and I guess what I basically said was, it's, a resolution is not worth the paper that it's written on unless it's deployed and, and the education component comes with it properly, and I implored, implored the city manager, if, if this does pass this evening, and I'm looking for action on this particular item this evening, that we have some educational components for our staff, if it is going to be code enforcement that is going to go out and deliver this to each business, they need to, they need to feel it, they need to understand it. You don't just walk into a business and hand them a piece of paper, that's not what this is all about. This is, we are coming to you as the city, and we are respectfully requesting that you ask your customers to wear a face mask, and here's why. So there has to be some education behind it. We are hopefully going to receive some funds from the CARES Act. We should be getting about $3.2 million if the I G A and everything is approved between the county and the city, and the CARES funds are for small business loan, are grants for, for COVID-related losses, for, for testing, for other things like that, and, you know, and the discussion I had with the city manager this afternoon, we said, well, maybe we can look at that funding, some of that funding, that we would be granting to our local businesses to use that as an incentive, to say, if you would like to apply for this funding, then you need to follow the mask-wearing, and to try, to try to tie that in and use that as some type of incentive. So I, I just don't want this to, I don't want this to just die on this table, and there be no outreach, or there be no communication that made it worth it all, because I, I truly believe in my heart, if you ask a business in Shambly to do this, and you say, "I'm respectfully, respectfully asking you to do this, and here's why," I think we all know most of our business owners, and I think they would, they would get it, and they would, and they would do it. But I just, I want to make sure that staff understands the seriousness of, you know, communicating to those who are handing out this resolution. It was also suggested that we could mail it, but again, that, that's not really doing anything. I'm going to open this, and I'm going to read it, and it's going to say, "Whereas, whereas, 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 whereas," and I'm not going to get past that fifth whereas before I'm going to put it down and say, "That's way over my head," all right? So as, as we determine the delivery model of this to our businesses and how we speak upon it to our citizens, I just feel that, that, you know, there should be some education behind it, and it shouldn't wait to go out in the mail. I mean, if we can get this approved this evening, I mean, I would expect that by, you know, the weekend, hopefully, that we could have some of our officers, some of our code enforcement folks out, talking it up to our businesses.
Very good, thank you, Brian. Another discussion? Leslie?
Yeah, I, I have several things to say about it. Number one, I think that we, we need to clarify that in a restaurant, a customer can't wear a mask while they're eating, but, but that's, you know, that's, that's a minor issue. I think that the, you are correct, that if you just give this to, you know, with no education and no explaining and no conversation with a business owner, they're going to take it a little bit less seriously than, or to heart than otherwise. I will also say that there is mask fatigue, you know, throughout the day, I try to wear my mask, this is what it looks like by the end of the day, it's muddy, but it's hot as heck outside, we're, we're allowing outdoor dining, so, and I'm not saying, oh, let's make excuses for why people would take their masks off or take them down from their nose or whatever, but I think that that is part of what needs to be the, in the education component, because it is very easy, you make it through half the day, and nobody, you haven't come in contact with anybody that's coughing, and you're hot and tired, and blah, 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 and it's like, I'm done, I've had enough. So I do think that that's, um, needs to be a way that we can get people wholeheartedly on board with it, number one. And then, number two, I think that tying it to some COVID funding, I think is probably a great idea.
Very good, other discussion?
I, I just want to say thank you, Brian, that, you obviously put a lot of time and thought in it, and I know, I know you did, actually, I don't have to think you did, but I do want to ask the city manager, what does he think about some of this implementation of this education, and, and how that might work, and, or, it was our, our request reasonable?
I think the request is reasonable, I mean, we do, we, we are minimizing, you know, contact right now, a lot of our staff, but I believe the request is reasonable. We were talking about this today, I can't say that we really spent a lot of time preparing for the implementation, that's something that, that we would do and could do tomorrow, and roll something out.
Very good, other discussion? Brian, I think it's a great idea, I just want to caution one thing, and that is, the first thing I heard tonight, the first time I heard it tonight, Brian, was, was tying any type of, of COVID funds to this type of requirement. Unfortunately, I have been involved in so many Zoom calls, conference calls, other calls with county officials over the distribution of these COVID monies, and it keeps coming back to us that, well, they are not going to give us the money, because there are so many very specific ways that you can and cannot spend this money, the federal government has said, and the county doesn't trust that we're going to spend them correctly, and so we're working on the I G A right now, and so I don't disagree that it may be a great idea, I just want to caution that it, it may or may not be something that could, could be tied to it, so I just, just don't want to, don't want to give the expectation that that's just a given. Unfortunately, I know more about this than I ever cared to. So with that, Brian, if you care to make a motion, you may be able to get a majority vote to move this forward this evening.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution in regards to requesting our citizens and our businesses follow mask-wearing procedures.
Second.
Very good. Is there any further discussion of this item? All right, we have a motion second from Councilmember Mock, and seconded by Leslie Robson, that we pass the resolution that strongly recommends and implores and asks very nicely that our residents and businesses wear masks. All those in favor?
Yeah.
I don't know who that is down there, but it sounded like it passed unanimously. All right, Brian, do we need to talk about your ordinance?
Yes, sir, we, I don't think we need to talk about it, everybody has it in hand. This is the ordinance that basically says must wear. The only reason I want to keep this on the agenda and keep it moving forward is because the governor's executive order expires on July 31st, this would not come back up again until August, and this is part of that whole second, two reads that, that we were talking about. So if, if everything is hunky-dory in August, and things are moving along nicely, then we can remove this at that time, but I don't want a bunch of time to go by and then have to come back in August and try to reinvent the wheel, so I'd just like to keep it moving along with the understanding that this, it could potentially be moved, moved from the agenda in August.
That makes sense. We beat this horse, but I think, did anybody have any questions about what Brian just said?
So I'd like to move that to first read.
Okay, very good, thank you. The next item, then, you, you had brought in a LSU flag, I saw you in the...
I did, I got this gorgeous...
I saw you, I saw you in the parking lot with us, and damn, man, you, you are going to lose your Alabama rights.
I got this big old beautiful LSU...
Oh, it's not LSU, I was fooled.
Honoring, honoring American combat wounded veterans. As you know, back, again, in late 2018, early 2019, somewhere along that timeframe, we became a Purple Heart city, and along with that becomes the responsibility that every August the 7th, we recognize our wounded veterans, and...
wounded veterans and have a specific way of, of doing that recognition. So I purchased, purchased this flag and I'm requesting that it be displayed prominently somewhere in front of City Hall. And in addition, I've seen a lot of the cities actually use their building up lighting to change it to purple to, to recognize our, our veterans. So I would like to request that, that staff look at the possibility of from August the 1st to August the 15th, not only displaying the flag, but for those two weeks, the first two weeks of August, to change the canister lighting or the outside lighting of City Hall where appropriate to purple.
Cool. Any discussion on this? Brian, it's awesome, bud. That is awesome. Thank you for doing that. All right. So you did add an item to the agenda, which again, you will sit out front and people will line up to flog you for keeping us here even longer, but I think-
Sorry, we're almost done and then we can go.
Well, I don't know. We got citizen comment and I still see a lot of people sitting out there, so.
So item number five was COVID-19 testing, and this is something that I've been working on. As many of you know, I am still in recovery mode from COVID myself. It, it has been pretty treacherous. And, and reaching out to the community, I found that there's a, a high percentage of, especially of our lower income, especially of our immigrant community, that does not have adequate resources for testing. You know, a lot of folks don't have cars. You've got, maybe in some communities, you've got multiple six, eight, 10 people living per apartment. When one gets sick, they all get sick. It's important that they have access to, to testing so that they can be proactive when being out in the community and not, not spreading it. I'm not just looking to specifically target our minority population because in the last couple of weeks, since there's been such an uptick in COVID, it's been hard for even the average citizen that has insurance to get an appointment for a test. I've heard of, of wait times 10 days, 11 days, 13 days, just to get in, just to get an appointment, not, not to get results, just to get an appointment. So it's over with. I mean, you're, you're hopefully recuperating before you ever find out that you, that you even had it. So I've worked, I've been reaching out over the past few weeks to several organizations. The COVID Consortium does a lot of charity-type testing. This is not something that would, would cost the city a lot of money, because most of the organizations I've reached out to, either one, if it's the lower-income communities, they have a, a procedure for billing the federal government. And if it's, if it so happens that some of the folks didn't give proper information or they weren't able to, didn't have a social security number or whatever, the cost that they have received from, from, from those who did give the proper information or were, did have the proper information, you know, it's, it's just a, if they have to write off 30%, they still made a profit. So I asked, I asked David Carter and, and Dr. John Barberian to, to step in tonight with us, just, just to give a little insight, because this is not something that needs to, or should wait three or four or five weeks to start hitting the ground. This is something that, I'm not talking about a matter of weeks, I'm talking about a matter of days. And I believe that all of the organizations I've reached out to have specifically said that they are able to deploy quickly and within, you know, within a few days of learning of our desire to actually do this, they can have folks on the ground going to the communities, not having the communities come to them. So going to the apartment complexes and testing. It takes partner organizations. We've looked at some partnerships with organizations because there has to be some trust. So we've looked at that. And so David or is-
It's just me tonight.
Okay, I can't, I can't see out there. But if you, if you could quickly just, just tell us what a pop-up event looks like, how quickly it could be implemented, how many tests per day, just the basics.
You got to turn your microphone, Your Honor.
Yes, Your Honor.
We were all going to, we were all going to rise when you walked up, you know?
So I'm here to give the DDA report for tonight. It's been a couple months now. So I am working with a laboratory down in Florida called Flo-Medi Laboratories. We're putting on these test sites on a regular basis. The surge in COVID testing, the demand has greatly exceeded the capacity of most laboratories. It's affecting, in fact, every laboratory we've talked to, every consultant that we've talked to. We're having to install new robotic equipment so we can handle 500 to 1,000 samples a day in a way that takes out the capacity for human error, which is a big problem. If you've read about the Florida testing facilities, they're reporting 100% positive rates, that's clearly a statistical anomaly. There's somebody doing something wrong in those labs. But it presents for us the example of what the surge causes problem-wise. If you are used to doing 100 tests a day and all of a sudden you're asked to do 1,000 tests a day, you're getting FedEx shipments overnighted to you, you've got big boxes lined up at your front door, you have people who are inputting those into your system, putting barcodes on them, trying to track those 1,000 cases through a system, which takes multiple steps. This is not basic chemistry. This is one machine to another machine to another machine, and then inputting it into software that can then get the results to somebody in a meaningful fashion. I know that you all have not seen COVID test results, but when they come out, it's a system of numbers. And above a number is a positive test and below a number is a certain test. But guess what? The CDC and every other medical expert out there has a different number that equates to a positive or negative test. So it is exceedingly complicated to do this sort of thing right. In terms of setting up a pop-up facility, what we would want to do is set up tents for consecutive weekends. I talked to Brian about, about doing it consecutive Saturdays. The reason for that is that if you try to push everybody in on just a Saturday or Sunday or a three-day weekend, number one, you get people who cannot make it for whatever reason on that weekend. But number two, you're now giving the lab several thousand samples at one time. It is far better to space these out over the course of a couple of weeks, because then you get a more consistent flow of the cases and a more consistent flow of the results, and they're given in a better organized fashion. Remember also that you will have false positives and false negatives. There will be tests that have to be rerun. Because these tests have to be rerun, it will take more time. But that takes more analysis by the scientists on the other end that are actually doing the tests. On our staff, we have several PhDs, people with multiple decades of experience, they're going to be the ones looking at these tests. One of the owners was actually one of the lead immunologists in New York following the 911 attacks on the Twin Towers. So we have very experienced people looking at this, but it's still people looking at tests. So the key to not having the delays that Brian did mention and the shortage of equipment is planning, planning, planning. There are certain things that we can do in advance, setting up appointments for people, making sure that we have extra test kits for people, so that if they do walk up, we can accommodate them without taking the test kits that are designated for the people who do have the appointments. One of the other things that we are starting to do, so we don't have a shortage of test kits, is we are starting to produce our own test kits. We have a 3D printing company here in Atlanta that is making our swabs. We're starting to source our own material that you have to ship the swabs in. So this is becoming a much, much larger endeavor, but the reason that we're doing this is because it is necessary to take care of the surge that we expect to last, not just through the summer, but for many, many months until there is a cure or a vaccine or some consensus in the scientific community about what it takes to actually quash this thing down. Right now, the science does not know. It says masks and tests and contact trace, and that is the best that we can do. But you can do a good job with the testing and you can do a good job with the contact tracing, and you can do a good job through planning and making sure that you cover as many people as possible. So with that, I think that we can do that. Are there any questions that I can answer to anybody tonight?
Great. Thanks, David. Good to see you here, bud. Appreciate you being here. Brian, you got something else on this?
No, sir. I'm going to ask on Tuesday that, well, I'm going to try to work with John and Catherine and some of the others throughout the next few days. And on Tuesday, I want to try to put together a dollar figure to pull a little bit of money out of reserves until we get the CARES Act funds to go ahead and get this started. And whether that's, you know, 10,000 or 20,000, some, some small number to actually get some marketing going and, and be able to get this, get this thing started next week.
Very good. You might get with me as well. I know John and Catherine, and John specifically been some of the meetings that I've been on, but I've been in several of these Zoom meetings talking about this in other communities throughout DeKalb County, so maybe I could help you out.
Your input is always welcome, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. All right. David, you're standing up the microphone. Did you want to give a citizen comment?
Nope, I'm good.
Oh, well, there you go. That's the citizen comment right there. David Carter, whatever his address is. All right. Very good. Then get away from the microphone. All right. We do have citizen comment, crowd favorite, several of you stuck around. I hope you just stuck around because you think this meeting is so entertaining. But if not, and you had something to say, we're glad you're here as well. You'll have three minutes to say what you want. Going once, going twice. I believe we'll have an executive session on Tuesday. Oh, all right. You almost lost your chance, man.
I know. I'm waiting in the back. I did have one more comment. My name is Brian Burns, 1672 Runnymede Road. Lot widths in Shambly, they are, you cannot choose any spot on the lot to, and I can keep this abstract, yeah, it's fine. You cannot measure at any arbitrary spot on the lot that you choose. The codes are explicit at where you measure the lot width. They have to be at the minimum building setback line. The setback line in Shambly is 20 feet from the property lines. If, otherwise, at any irregularly shaped lot, you could choose any spot on the lot to measure the lot width. If we were to go with the argument earlier that the lot width of the variances in question should be the size argued, then the setback line would be 20 feet from the property line at the spot they want it measured. It would have to be there and it would go straight through all of the houses, three of the houses, meaning the setback, the whole thing is invalid, if we buy the, if we go with that argument. So I just want to point that out. Now, for flag lots in other cities across the country that I've seen that have variance, that have ordinances for them, they either choose the right-of-way, and that's what Shambly, Shambly puts the setback line from the right-of-way, the property line that's at the right-of-way. And that's how, how it's implemented now. And it could also be, and that's why the lot width has to be what the staff has stated. Other cities that have chose to write ordinances for flag lots have also chose from the right-of-way of the shared driveway. The shared driveway is a right-of-way. The front yards face the shared driveway, thus the setback has to be from that right-of-way. But either way, in all three cases, it would make this development invalid. There's no case where it's valid if we, wherever you measure the lot width and put the setback line. So I just wanted to state that because it, the argument made earlier, we did not get to rebut that, and that is, if we do take that argument at face value, it makes the building setbacks invalid. They have to, the houses have to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Three minutes.
Hey there. Peter Young, 1685 Hartford Glen. Just, first of all, wanted to thank the council for addressing the flag lot issue and thinking about it carefully. From what I've heard today, I understand that flag lots are not explicitly addressed in the current rules for Shambly. But just because something's not addressed in the rules doesn't mean that you should approve it. This shared driveway, this 300-foot shared driveway is going to go where there is no driveway today, and it's going to go along the property line of at least three properties. And to me, that's not a driveway, that's a street. So I would just ask you to reconsider whether flag lots ought to be allowed at all. I think it's not in character with the surrounding neighborhoods, and I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
I also came to speak in favor of the Harts Mill project.
Sir, you need to give your name and address to the city clerk, please.
Will Childs, 3112 Skyland Drive, Shambly. You know, toss around the terms of economic diversity, housing affordability. No secret that, you know, in between the apartments and the big nice estate lots, there's not a whole lot of moderately affordable housing for growing families who wish to stay in the area. I actually, you know, kind of fit that bill and was considering housing options as my family grew and bought a house that Falconari I did. It, you know, after talking with my neighbors after moving in, they, you know, shared the sentiment, like a lot of these neighbors said, they didn't want it, they hated seeing the trees go down, they thought, you know, a little extra density here is going to devalue their properties. Ultimately, it turned out to be, you know, what I think and what all the neighbors tend to agree, that's, you know, a beautiful, well-thought-out, visually appealing property in the area that's really, you know, catered to, to a economic and housing need. You know, typically don't, don't come out to talk about these kinds of things, but I've seen the issue kind of blow up through different forums, whether it be through Facebook or Nextdoor app and, you know, different complaints about density and utilities and schools. Just seems like it's gotten a little ridiculous out of hand. It's four houses, you know, you hear similar voices, virtually silent on hundreds of apartments going in and, you know, in town. You know, looking at the map, it's generally in character of the neighborhood, tons of .2 to .25 acre home sites. It meets an economic need, a housing gap that's there, and, you know, I'd encourage you not only to vote in favor of it, but to encourage more of it. It's really a product that works and, and I think would be beneficial.
Great. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Anyone else? There we go.
So hi. Doug Morehouse again. Just one thing following what Brian was saying about the, the lot widths. There's different ways to look at it, I think. So right now, the flag stem is being considered the front yard, and so that's where you're getting the, the front yard requirements. If you were to actually look at the functional front yard between the building, house number one and the property line of the house number, the rear lot of house number one, it's seven and a half feet. So I don't know of anywhere in Shambly or anywhere else that a seven and a half foot front yard is in character. I've not seen that anywhere at all. So I don't, I don't think it's in character of the, of the area. Following on Peter's comment, one other thing I'd like to point out about the, the road that's going in, somebody mentioned parking earlier and concerns, there will be no parking on that, on that road, that driveway. There's also very little parking associated with each house. The houses, the pads are very small. There's no, there's no parking on Harts Mill Road. Where will any of these cars park? It's going to be going off into these other neighborhoods on Harts Mill Road. So that's, that's another issue of concern that I was asked to, to mention on behalf of some of the neighbors. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Doug. Appreciate you being here. Anyone else? Yep, come on up, sir.
I'm Jeff Landers. I live at two Orlean's Place in Brookhaven. I'm about 1,800 feet to 2,000 feet from this property. Google says I can walk there in seven minutes. Google hasn't seen me walk in a long time, apparently. I happen to be a unique position that I live on a very similar property to what they're proposing for this one. The Harts Mill subdivision that I live in had a little bit of a remaindered land, and they, an enterprising individual took that land that was remaindered and built three houses on it, on Orlean's Court. I'm one of those houses. We have a shared drive in front of it. I live in the middle house. I've lived there, I moved in one year before the mayor moved into his house. I've been there 18 years. I'm pretty sure those neighbors, well, these houses were built seven, seven years before I moved in, didn't like it either. And the reality is, of those properties in front of me, I've met one of those neighbors four times. I helped them with a limb that they needed help with. I brought them red snapper that I caught the day before in the Gulf during snapper season. They came to thank me for the snapper once and I talked to them one other time. The other neighbor that has a swimming pool, I walked back and forth with a bathing suit, with a jug of cold lemonade and a snorkel, hoping they would notice me and invite me in. My point being, all of this fear that you, and we're exactly on grade. I drove this lot, those houses to the right of it, facing it, have a, there's a retaining wall with an eight-foot privacy fence on it. I'm not encroached on my neighbors and we're at grade and I've- I'm not encroached on my neighbors, and we're at grade, and I've lived there literally 18 years. The mayor has driven by my house a minimum, if he goes 2.2 trips a day, about 10,500 trips. If he only goes one direction, 5,000 trips.
More than that.
I bet you he cannot tell any of you the color of my house. He can't do it. It's not an eyesore. If you read this petition, they call the houses an eyesore. Far from a eyesore. You don't even notice our street. I have to give my friends explicit directions on how to find it. This fear of an eyesore is unfounded. And as far as people saying, if we allow these three lots, they're going to pop up all over, well, you know, they might, if you have this conflict, if you have these events, six or eight cluster home communities that have two tenths of an acre lot, I'm bringing Brookhaven in, even though someone said they didn't care. The zoning is five, five houses per acre where I live. Side street is 6,000 to 8,000 square foot minimum lots. All of these are within 1,500 feet of this.
All right. We only have three minutes here. If you could just wrap it up, we're just right there.
That area is, what is surprising for that area is not that they want these four lots on that acre. What's, what's surprising and stands out are the two one-acre lots that they are. Those are what's actually not in character in that specific area on that street. These should be approved and should be welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if I suggest that you take something other than lemonade, you might get in the pool. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. I believe we do not have an executive session this night, thank God, so I will call us adjourned, send everyone home. Go kiss your kids and kick the dog, or kick the kids and kiss the dog. I don't care which.